Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to Fresno City Hall. This is our meeting for November 14th. It's great to see all of you here. The more people that are involved, the greater our city becomes. So, thank you for taking the time to be here. Hi Blake, how are you? Good to see you. And we'll begin with a roll call.
Councilmember Bretafell. Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Sparza.
President.
Councilmember Karbasi.
President.
Councilmember Soria. And Council Vice President Arias.
Presidente.
And President Capriolio.
I'm here, thank you very much. Next, we'll do our invocation. So Pastor Stoli, will you please come forward? Good morning, sir. Thank you for being here. He will lead us in our invocation this morning. Remain standing and then we'll salute the flag immediately thereafter. Good morning, thank you.
All right, let's pray together. Father, what a great country we live in. What a great city that we can open a meeting like this in prayer. This is your city. These are your people. You own everything here and you created all of us. And also, very importantly, these are your leaders that you chose sovereignly to be in these important positions today. So, we pray you'd give them wisdom to lead this city, to represent those that are hard working, and also those that may be powerless, that need help. We pray all these things, Father, for your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pray, salute, our flag. United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that prayer. Okay, moving along on our agenda this morning. City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda this morning?
Yes, I have three changes. The first one is 1L, as in Larry, and it's regarding amending the FMC relating to the Planning Commission composition. On that item, the bill number should be 45. The next change is the 10 o'clock item regarding a resolution initiating comprehensive update to the Fresno General Plan to allow future adoption. We'd like to add Vice President Arias as a co-sponsor. And the last change is the 11 o'clock item regarding amending the FMC to confidentiality of closed-session attorney privilege communications. The bill number on that item should be Bill 44. Those are all the changes I have.
Thank you very much. Is there any council member that would like to make any changes to the agenda? Member Chavez?
Thank you, President. I'm going to be continuing the General Plan Amendment item for the next meeting, which would be December 5th. Want to enter that for the record. Thank you.
What number is that? If you have it.
I knew you were going to ask me.
We've got to work together.
19-11556. 10 a.m.
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock? Okay, thank you. Any other council member wish to change or pull an item from the agenda? Now's the opportunity.
President, I'd like to move Item 1L for the December 5th meeting.
That's on consent calendar?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get to that as well. Anybody else? So, is there a motion to approve the balance of the agenda?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Member Soria, seconded up by Member Karbasi. Karbasi, excuse me, Mike. Capriolio, and I can't say Karbasi. What's up? Huh? Sorry about that. Okay. Is there any opposition to the motion?
Well, I wanted to, for the consent?
Not yet.
Okay. Just changing.
You guys are getting ahead of me. After one year, you guys got to follow my lead. Two more meetings, then you're on your own. We'll do a re-education.
Yeah.
Felt like Johnny Carson just then, having a cup of coffee. Okay, is there any opposition to the motion to approve the agenda? Seeing none, it passes 7-0. Next are the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of November 7th?
No changes.
Council meeting? No changes? Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Member Arias, seconded by Member Chavez. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, it passes 7-0. Next are the ceremonial presentations. Our lead-off hitter is Proclamation of World Prematurity Day. That's sponsored by Councilmember Soria. That'll follow the Proclamation for Seek Awareness and Appreciation Day by Councilmember Soria again.
So first, we're going to go ahead and do the resolution or the proclamation for World Prematurity Day. I want to invite folks that are here, Dr. Curry, Dr. Pacheco, Janice, and then Shontae, if you guys want to come on. So we're here today to present a proclamation to Best Baby Zone. And so, these are the fabulous women behind doing this great work. Much-needed work here in our community and looking, and I think we've highlighted some of the startling statistics impacting African-American families. And so, I wanted to just share some of the data that has been revealed, in particular here in our Fresno County. So, right here at home, where the African-American population experiences an infant mortality rate of 25.3 per 1,000 life births. That is compared to a rate of 8.1 per 1,000 life births for white residents. That means that this is 3.13 times higher in terms of the rate. Again, this is a very startling statistic that is happening. It wasn't happening 100 years ago. It's happening today, 2019, in our community. So, the work that these women are doing in our community, the resources that they're providing, that we need to get educated about the data that exists here that is impacting a tremendous amount of families and children in our community is critical, and we need to highlight it. But most importantly, we need to make sure that our government here locally and that there are state and federal resources investing in fixing the issue that impacts so many of the families here in our home, not only the city of Fresno, but the entire county. So, Best Baby Zone has been picked here in Fresno as part of the, there's like a fourth cohort, and you guys can kind of explain after I share a little bit more. And so, they were just the second California city to be chosen to co-lead agencies. We know very well the West Fresno Family Resource Center, and then also here our Fresno County Public Health Department to continue to really strive to address the issues, as I mentioned, with the startling statistics. So, Best Baby Zone is not just about babies in our community. It's about creating vibrant, healthy communities as a whole. So, it's not just about one thing. I think we need to look at the issue at a broader when we're talking about how we're better investing in neighborhoods, how we are planning for the future of the city. It all has public health impacts that can help address this issue. So, I want to thank them for the work that you guys have done, the fact that you guys continue to highlight the issue, but I think most importantly that we hold ourselves accountable as leaders and that you guys are holding the other leaders accountable that have the resources to invest to make sure that we're addressing this tremendous disparity that exists here in our community, and we should not be proud of what is happening just here.
Good morning. I'm Shontae. I'm the Regional Director of Maternal Child Health for the Central Valley, and I'm absolutely honored to be able to work with these women to address some core issues that are happening in our community. We do have very disparate outcomes, and we've been able to really pull together, look at the data, work around some initiatives, and the Best Baby Zone, and I'll let my partners here talk about it, but it's really the outcome of some foundational work that we've been laying over the past year and a half. And so, we're very excited to have been selected, one out of only two California sites, and it's a national initiative, so it's a very prestigious designation for us to have that.
Good morning. My name is Janice Mathurin, and I'm the Director of Operations with West Fresno Family Resource Center, which is a community-based organization. Our organization is committed to improving community, working with the community to address health disparities and the like. And so, we've actually worked with March of Dimes and Anthem Blue Cross last year on a project called Birth Spacing. And so, the Best Baby Zone essentially is a second phase of the work that's being done to address infant mortality. The Best Baby Zone, we're so delighted to be part of this designation for an issue that certainly we're not proud of in our community, but it's, the Best Baby Zone is a place-based effort, engaging community so that they can, you know, play a pivotal role in identifying and addressing some of those structural, social, economic determinants of health to address this disparity. And so, we are working diligently with the community. We don't want to, as an organization, identify. We are letting the community let us know how we can approach this.
Hi, and I am Megan Black, and I'm the interim coordinator for the Black Infant Health Program here in Fresno County. We are a free pregnancy support program for African-American women, and we provide social support, and our goal is to just reach one family and increase the sisterhood amongst our women.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Dr. Vanisee Curry. First, I want to thank Councilmember Soria for honoring and for recognizing the work and for sharing out the importance of working together and the fact that this is an issue that plagues Fresno County. This is so personal for each of us, but it also impacts our city and our county in a large way. We know that each family that suffers a loss, whether it's an infant or a mother, doesn't get over that in a minute, or a day, or a lifetime. So, it is a very personal issue. We know that working together with different constituents, with different stakeholders, that we've been successful in just reaching women where they are and figuring out how do we address this and how do we improve not only the statistics for Fresno and Fresno City and Fresno County, but how do we make lives better? How do we create neighborhoods that actually nurture so that our outcomes are better and our birth equity is what we're seeking to do? So, we appreciate the support. We will be coming back because this is an initiative and there are projects that are developing now that are really focused on targeting this issue in a really specific and intentional way. And that does include looking at neighborhoods and looking at land use and talking about air pollution and air quality and healthcare access and food access and just creating, again, neighborhoods that nurture. And so, our goal is to highlight this issue, but we are absolutely on the ground and we are seeking fellow warriors to work with us on this issue. So, we thank you again. We appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas World Prematurity Day is celebrated internationally on November 17th, and whereas premature births threatens the lives and health of 15 million babies around the world every year, and is the leading cause of death among newborns, and whereas Fresno County has one of the highest rates of premature births in California, where one in every nine babies are being born prematurely, and whereas we are working to improve the health of mothers and babies to help prevent premature births in Fresno County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fresno Mayor and the City Council does hereby recognize November 17th, 2019, as World Prematurity Day in the City of Fresno.
The next proclamation that I have the pleasure of presenting is for Seek Awareness Month for the month of November. I want to call up all the community members up to be here in recognition of this proclamation. And if any of my colleagues want to come, you guys are welcome to come down. So I know that last week, we had an opportunity to also present a special proclamation celebrating over 500 years here for the Seek, and it was a very special recognition. Today, in what we've done, I believe, for a number of years now here in the city of Fresno, November, the month of November, is used to be able to recognize the Seek community, their contributions to our country, and most importantly, recognize the Seek families and residents that live here in the city of Fresno, that are friends, are neighbors, are our community partners, and work with us tirelessly to make sure that the city of Fresno and that the county that we live in is, you know, a better place each year. So, just wanted to take the time to acknowledge our Seek community. One of the interesting things that I found is that over 100 years ago, the first Seek Temple was built in the state of California. So, the Seek community has been here, present in our state, in our country for many years. Because of tragic incidents that have happened in the last probably five years, I believe the Seek community over the last few years took upon themselves to educate our community about Seek families and what they were about and who they are. They're just like us. They're our brothers and sisters, they're our neighbors, they're our doctors, they're lawyers, they're business owners, they are moms, they are dads, and they are children in our community that are just like us. They are Americans that believe in American values, that carry that. They believe in equality and inclusivity. And so, I just want to thank all the work that, thank you guys for all the work that you guys have done. We've been able to name a park after your community, which I think was a momentous location here in the city of Fresno, recognizing the value that Sikhs bring to our community. So with that, I'll pass it on to any of my other colleagues that may want to say a few words. Yeah? Okay, so we'll go ahead and just read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas we dedicate the month of November in California for Seek American Awareness Appreciation for the contributions they have made to the Central Valley through agriculture, business, trucking, medicine, law, engineering, education, and law enforcement. And whereas today in California is home to the largest Seek communities outside Punjab. And whereas more than 30,000 Sikhs reside in San Joaquin Valley and Sikhs account for 20% of table grape farmers in the Fresno and Bakersfield area. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fresno Mayor and the City Council does hereby proclaim the month of November 2019 to be Seek Awareness Month in the City of Fresno.
So, first of all, we really want to thank City of Fresno. You know, we feel at home now. It was a big struggle, starting with the 1984 Sikh resolution, naming the park. You do see a lot of our people working in the farms, working at the stores, in education, a lot of the doctors. So, you know, we live the American dream. So, we really want to throw a big shout-out to State of California for passing a resolution, November as a Sikh Appreciation Month, Awareness Month, and a big thank you to Councilwoman Esmeralda Soria and all the council member and the mayor for giving us an opportunity even like last week and this week, recognizing the contribution. Because, you know, when my family, I like sharing a story, when my family came here, we came out, my father, my family, we came with nothing. I mean, my dad had a little bag. And then, I have heard all the words, "Go back to your country," "You ragheads," "You this and that." You know, but we took that initiative as youngsters. Our parents never spoke up. Our elder generation, I don't know, they were afraid or they spoke no English. We went to school here. You know, we were like, we learned the American values. And they were like, you know, the Sikh values are American values, equality, equality between the gender, equality for the human race, and opportunities. And I just want to recognize two milestones for West of '99. I'm a big spokesman for that because Clinton Avenue, probably all the people who live there, you have probably seen how smooth Clinton Avenue has gotten from '99 all the way up to Clinton and Brawley. Give it up for that. That was the city council, working so hard. And a big collaboration between Esmeralda Soria, Miguel Arias, and the Fresno County Brian Pacheco. See, that's what the Sikhs are all about. We are involved with the Justus Van St. Carter Park. There is a lot of investments there. You know, when we get involved, we get involved. So, this is a great opportunity, so, you know, for our children, for our communities. You know, never feel down. You know, lift yourself up. You know, it's okay to live in a small house because with the American dream, we can build mansions, and that has happened. So, like I said, our council has been very supportive. We are very proud. Fresno, we talk about equity. Fresno's equity is being shared, I mean, all over, North Fresno, West Fresno, South Fresno, East Fresno. I mean, Fresno is flourishing with over half a million people from every background, every language. Fresno is very special. Fresno is a very, very special place. So, thank you Fresno. A big thank you, Esmeralda Soria, for reaching out to us and all the councils. We appreciate you, and we love our Fresno community. So, give it up for the Fresno community. So, thank you. God bless you guys. Thank you for celebrating the Sikh Appreciation and Awareness Month with the community. Do we have any of our community member want to say anything? Oh, okay.
Thank you so much, Esmeralda Soria, Councilwomen, for this wonderful honor. And I just wanted to let everybody know that's here today that Sikhs, Sikhism is all about love and oneness. So, it doesn't matter what culture, what religion, what background we're from, we're all one. We all come from that one light, and we must learn to love one another, and that's what, I think that's what America's all about. That's why we love America. And, you know, even the whole universe, it's just all about oneness and love. So, let's destroy that hatred. So, I just want, we're all here, and another thing I want to say is Sikhs come in all different forms. We're all standing here. I look, we look like this, we look like this, and we look like this. So, thank you so much for having us today, and thank you for this great honor.
We are proud to be Fresnoans first, and we are proud to be Californians, and last but not the least, we are proud to be Americans. Fresno city, city council, and the Fresno people, they have always, always supported us, and they have always taken the lead in supporting the Sikh people here and every community in here. Thank you very much, though this is, I think, second year we are celebrating the Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. And also, this is very important, last week, we had 550th birth anniversary, which was celebrated here in this hall. So, Fresno, thank you very much, and we are very thankful to the whole of the council, mayor, and the members. Thank you.
And next is Member Karbasi, and he has a proclamation honoring KMY Inc.
And we are going to start with a video.
My name's Najib Chaudry. I am the prosthetic and orthotist. So, with KMY Prosthetics and Orthotics, the purpose was to serve on this northwest side for amputees, as well as all the braces needed for spinal, lower leg, and stuff like that. We get patients as far as almost Bakersfield and up north, up to past Madera.
I nominated KMY Prosthetics and Orthotics because they utilize Workforce Connection. We're actually the only organization that he utilizes when he has job openings. As a matter of fact, currently, he has four employees, and three of them are through Workforce Connection. He really believes in our organization and what we do.
The last two years, we started working with Workforce Connection. I met Cecil, and we hired three people so far through Workforce Connection. We trained them and we hired them, two work in the office here in KMY and one works in the fabrication lab.
I've been working for KMY Prosthetics and Orthotics as a front desk receptionist for the last almost three months. KMY Prosthetics and Orthotics is a place that is all about the patients they serve and all about the community they serve. The doctor here, he goes above and beyond.
KMY Prosthetic and Orthotic is a good employer because it's a full-time basis. It's a day job, Monday to Fridays. I use my bilingual skills every day.
We assisted Najib in the hiring process. We organized the entire interview process. We called our participants, and we provided them with times and dates to show to his office for an interview, and he really enjoyed that. It was so easy for him. And within this past year, he hired three employees through that process.
They found me the people, they screened for me, so they saved me some time. And then, we talked about the different things we needed, and we went over the job qualifiers. And so, they found me the candidates, and we use the candidates along with everything else to work together as a team.
It has been a very good opportunity for me as a new person living in Fresno, so I'm glad I connected with Workforce Connection.
This place is also best because it has provided me the opportunity to advance. I recently attended a workshop for a shifeter course, which will help me get more job opportunities to help me serve the patients even better.
I received great feedback from our participants. They really enjoy working here. They all say that the doctor, Najib, has passion for what he does. He has passion to help the community, and they really enjoy working here.
Workforce has been good for me because we've been able to help each other out, to help people find work, as well as help me as an employer, and save us a lot of time and headache in finding applicants.
Doctor, you look good on camera. So, I'm really proud to be here today because the Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board does a fantastic job getting both adults and students the training and experience necessary to obtain a great job. But they're only able to do this with the help of businesses that make their students, that take their students in and give them the experience and training needed to be successful. We're here today to honor one of these exceptional businesses that falls in District 2, and we're proud to have you, KMY Prosthetic and Orthotic, Inc. I just want to add, my family also has a small business in northwest Fresno, and we spoke a moment ago about equity, and a big part of equity is giving people the skills they need to be able to thrive, and we need businesses to partner with that mission. The Workforce Development Board does a lot of that. It means so much that you're willing to take a chance on someone and give them opportunity as a business, and I'm very grateful for you. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Blake. Blake is also a District 2 resident. I'm very honored to be your councilman, and he's going to tell you a little bit more, and he's the Executive Director of the Regional Workforce Development Board.
Thank you, Councilman. We're pleased here today to recognize KMY Prosthetic and Orthotics. In addition to the proclamation from the City Council, they are our Adult Business of Excellence Award winner, and Dr. Najib Chaudry, who is really a success story on so many levels. He's been here in town for four years, an entrepreneur, starting his own business and giving opportunities to residents to get employment. So, thank you for all that you do, Dr. Chaudry.
Did I say anything? Yeah. All right.
I want to thank you, the councilman member, as well as workforce, but I'd like to start out with thanking the one who's given But I'd like to start out with thanking the one who's given all the opportunity as a creator. In our language, we say Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. So, I want to thank him for all the opportunity he gives. As far as, many of these people do not know my history. I am a Clovis resident since 1979. Okay? I was here such a long time ago that we started when Casner and Clovis West, all of those opened up, I was one of those people that went to Casner. That's how far back I go. Anyhow, so it's not different for me. And the last five years, we started the business KMY Prosthetics and Orthotics here on the west side. And our sole purpose is to give everybody an opportunity, whether it's somebody seeking to improve their skills or students that come from all the schools, you know, the medical systems and stuff like that, we like to honor them. And once again, I want to thank Cecil and Steven from Workforce, who's been working with me for the last two years, as well as Blake and Councilman for recognizing us. Thank you very much.
Listen, next, we're going to do a proclamation for the Denise Soria Day in the city of Fresno. So, come on down here Denise. So, she has a lot of familiar faces. You can all come down and join us too, get in these photo ops. Come on, come on, don't be shy. These are engineers and future engineers for the city of Fresno. Come on down. Do I, you guys making me beg? Come on. So, I'm surrounded by engineers, so my IQ would fit in the palm of their hand probably because these are some really brilliant ladies. So, Denise is, we're celebrating her accomplishments and celebrating women in engineering. Later this evening at Fresno State, they'll be recognizing the Shining Star Students. And what that means is the engineering students become involved with major corporations and they intern for them. And I think about 90% end up being hired by the company that they intern for. That's what quality Fresno State is producing and the quality by these leaders around me with the engineering department at Fresno State. You're trying to look shy. You know I'm telling the truth, huh? We're friends. We, we do a lot of things together at the university. So, you know, because of Denise, you and your passion to motivate students and women to continue the path of engineering, we can't appreciate and thank you enough for your leadership. It's fantastic. She actively promotes STEM careers among the youth in the community. So, I want to thank you and please continue representing Fresno. Few words?
Thank you. I'm grateful to be here today and have the opportunity to serve as a role model for other young girls and women to pursue careers in engineering. 20%, did you know that 20% of the bachelor's degrees awarded in engineering are held by women? Only 20%. And out of those 20%, only 4% of those degrees are held by African-American, Hispanic, and Native American women combined. So, that's a very, very small number. And not only do we not have enough women in engineering, the few women that we do leave the industry by year five because of the hostile work environments, lack of career advancement opportunities, and a culture that is just not inviting to women. And so, I'm very grateful to have been elected as a sweet senator and have a platform to bring awareness to the issues that women in engineering face. Diversity is a beautiful thing and we need more of that. And I personally couldn't have been here if it weren't for the support of Dr. Brisa Quiros, who always has seen my potential and has given me the pressure to transform from that carbon molecule to a diamond. My supervisor, Alexander Mushigan, or as I call him, Hefe, for supporting my leadership development. He's always been very gracious to allow me to take on opportunities and just really nurture that leadership. My family, who keeps me humble and has always supported my crazy ideas.
And what is your education?
I have a bachelor's in civil engineering and a master's in civil engineering from Fresno State.
And your children?
No children.
Your children?
I have my, my siblings.
Siblings.
Marilyn, close, Marilyn, pursuing a degree in electrical engineering with a minor in computer science. Natalie, pursuing her bachelor's in mechanical engineering. And Asher, who's pursuing his degree in geology. So, STEM careers.
Well, you know, I just want to say thank you for being here and this honor is minimal compared to what you do. And you are the tip of the spear that's going to make the changes and change those statistics and make it better for everyone in our community, especially the women that we've addressed. So, your leadership is greatly appreciated along with your colleagues and we, you, will make a difference. So, we're going to read the proclamation for you because this is Denise Soria Day in the city of Fresno. We're going to hear about it right now.
Whereas Denise Soria is a water resource control engineer with the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. And whereas Ms. Soria is currently serving her first year of a three-year term as Senator for the Society of Women Engineers, a global nonprofit organization that empowers women to achieve their full potential as engineers and leaders. And whereas Ms. Soria actively encourages young girls and minorities to pursue science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, STEM careers by speaking at a STEM event throughout central California. And whereas, we now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim Thursday, November 14, 2019, to be Denise Soria Day in the city of Fresno.
She is such a personality and really does a great job at the university. So, absolutely, thank you, thank you. All right, now we have another exciting moment. The other day, I read a story that Fresno Bee last month and it brought information about a beautiful, beautiful couple and a blessing, they reached their 100th birthday just recently. So, we want to celebrate that. So, Dr. Maston turned 100 years young, as did his wife, Laverne, 100 years young. And we are welcoming them here at City Hall to celebrate their birthday with us, if you would. And when they were at school together, they were known as the Brain Trust. They were super intelligent and, I don't know, I've got a question for you though. Come on up, join me. Let's celebrate. So, behind me, we should have a beautiful picture at this. Can you see it? So, this is from the Fresno Bee, the story that they wrote. And in reading that article, the bottom line was the message, "Love and respect one another is the key to the success of a happy marriage." Am I right? Would you like to say a few words, Dr. Maston? Would you like to say a couple of words? Not really? Aw, you're so shy. He's such a shy guy. Anyway, this is, yesterday was my mother's 93rd birthday and we celebrated that and I was really happy about that. And then to see 100-year-old birthday celebration is fantastic. Yes. So, would everyone kind of help me out here a little bit? Ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Fantastic. Would you like to come up, the family? Come down. We have his beautiful, their beautiful daughter here to help celebrate this. Can we read the proclamation?
Whereas married in the summer of 1943 at First Presbyterian Church in downtown Fresno, Malcolm and Laverne Maston are celebrating 76 years of marriage. And whereas, Dr. Malcolm Maston shared his medical knowledge while serving his country during World War II as a member of the United States Army and while serving rose to the rank of captain in the medical corps. And whereas, a well-traveled couple, Malcolm and Laverne have visited over 90 countries. And whereas, we are delighted to congratulate Malcolm and Laverne on the joyful occasion of their 100th birthday. And now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby honor and recognize Malcolm and Laverne on their 100th birthday for many decades of dedication to their family and community and we wish them the happiest birthday. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Leo Bran, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim Thursday, November 14, 2019, to be Malcolm and Laverne Maston Day in the city of Fresno.
It's your day. Would you like to say a couple of words?
We'd like to thank everyone in Fresno for this and the council for recognizing my parents. They were born here. My sister and I were born here. Even though Dad went to Philadelphia for medical school, they knew they were coming back and they've contributed so much to Fresno. And my father's father is actually the one who Maston Towers is named after. He was an agriculture professor at Fresno State. So, we have a long history of contributing to this community and it's so nice to be recognized this way. Thank you so much for my parents.
Thank you very much. I must confess, Dr. Maston wanted to sit down and said, "If you stay a little longer, I'll get you a cup of coffee." So, he's like, he's at attention, like he wants that coffee. Thank you so much and congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, next is a proclamation of National Alzheimer's Disease and Long-Term Caregiver Day. This is an honor that Member Soria and I get involved with each and every opportunity we have. My father passed away from Alzheimer's disease 11 years ago, January 21st. And Ismae's family has some issues with Alzheimer's as well. So, it's really, really important for us to celebrate moments like this and share it with our community. Ismae?
Yes, so it is my pleasure and honor to be able to not only recognize that November is also Alzheimer's Awareness Month, but also recognize the workers that every day, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, many of them. And I know that because my father is dealing with it, these individuals are carrying people that are suffering from Alzheimer's. So, I thought it was appropriate to recognize along with Councilmember Capriolo because the two of us, this issue is very personal. Our, both of our parents suffered from Alzheimer's and we see it, or we've seen it up close and up front. And so, from the bottom of our hearts, we want to thank you for the work that you do to make sure that the quality of life of our loved ones continues to be the best in their remaining days. So, again, thank you for the work that you all do. And Martha, if you would just want to say a few words?
Thank you for recognizing us. As you know, our work is really tough. As you know, my daughter, I am a care provider, like all of my friends here. I take care of my daughter. Crystal was born with Down Syndrome. As you know, I took it really, really bad, but then I started to think, God's not going to give you something you can't handle. Now, we cannot live with Crystal and I've always fighting for her. What worried me, like six years ago, I got breast cancer and I started to think about her future. And I know, like, I want someone that's going to take care of her with a lot of love like I do. And also, as you know, the baby boomers are getting older. They're older now and they need a lot of help now. They need our care. But I'm afraid, and it's happening now, that we're not going to have enough care providers because we only get, pay the minimum wage. And, and I'm going to fight and I'm going to fight till the end. As you know, me and Delores Huerta got arrested for fighting for my daughter and everybody here and all the care providers. And I will still keep fighting and even though my son's a police officer, that didn't look too good, but he knew the reason that I was doing it. So, I ask you, city councils, to please talk to the board of supervisors. Let them know how important our work is because they don't think that we should get paid for taking care of our loved ones. And I don't think that's right because we take care of, we would not have anybody else take care of our loved ones because they will not take care of them with the love and the care that we give them. And now, I'd like to have everyone introduce themselves and tell us who they take care of.
My name is Apolonia Valencia. I've been taking care of my husband for three years and I think that...
Hello, my name is Alba Rodriguez. I'm taking care of my mom since 2011 with Alzheimer's and currently taking care of other ones, that loved ones that have Alzheimer's also.
I take care of my mother, that's 86, with Alzheimer's. My aunt, that's 93, also has Alzheimer's. And my husband's just been diagnosed with Alzheimer's.
I'm Cheryl Campbell. I take care of a 47-year-old woman who has severe schizophrenia.
My name's Lacey Lowery and I have three recipients, two of which are my parents. And I just want to thank you, councilmembers, very much for recognizing us today because the work that we do is very hard and a lot of people don't see that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you again for the work that you do to make sure that our loved ones are loved and cared. So, with that, Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas Alzheimer and Caregiver Day is intended to recognize and thank family members, friends, and neighbors who devote their precious time to providing care to the loved ones. And whereas, there are more than 40 million caregivers across the country who support aging parents, ill spouses, or other loved ones with disabilities. And whereas, the city of Fresno recognizes and honors the commitment of those who dedicate their time to being caregivers for their loved ones and thank them for all that they do to enrich and better our communities by keeping them strong. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby proclaim November 14, 2019, to be Alzheimer and Caregivers Day in the city of Fresno.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
There we go. It's a really, really tough thing, Alzheimer's disease, and I hope it never touches any one of your lives. It's, it's a real deal and it's tough, very tough. Anyway, let's move on to proclamation of Mark Castro Day in the city of Fresno. This is sponsored by Members Chavez, Karbasi, the mayor's office, and Council President Capriolo.
Thank you, Judge Cap, I mean, Councilmember Capriolo. We could have Mark Castro come up. So, this is the, the pride of Sunnyside High. Is this, is this father around? Come on up, Mr. Castro. Congratulations. So, today's a very special day. Mark is a Olympian and, you know, he's been working really hard, Sunnyside High alum. But here's the amazing part about this. So, usually we have an athlete, they put in a lot of hard work and passion and commitment to the discipline of boxing. But he was also a valedictorian at Sunnyside High when he was in high school. So, straight A's and soon-to-be world champion. So, when you get the world championship, you got to come back and we got to take a picture with, with that one. So, we want to bring him today and honor him and make sure that, you know, we showcase our folks, the best of the best of the best in southeast. I know we share southeast jurisdiction. We wanted to bring him down and honor him for his work, his commitment, and putting Fresno on the map. And I believe you're going to be going to Japan for the Olympics. That's, that's the next, next step. So, Councilmember, would you like to say a few words too?
Just a couple of words. You know, you got the looks.
I see a proud dad here right now. So what do you want to say about your son?
Well, my son is the one, I would say, one of the kids that the street can take it away from me. You know, there's a lot of kids out there like my son, but they didn't have the opportunity that he had. You know, everything is a must as a parent, fight for our kids anyway. I mean, so poor as it is anyway, you know. So I'm very proud of my family. He's a, he has a twin sister. I have four kids. He's the only, he's the only man. And I'm very proud of my family and we trust in God, God will guide us through here. And if it's God's will, he's going to be an Olympian, but it's on his head. It's out of our control. Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you. Just one question. Between you and your sister, who do I put money on?
First, I'd like to thank God and just everybody for being here. I just like to thank my family for putting me in the position to be successful and I received this with great honor and pride. And I appreciate it. I'm a Fresno State student and I got Fresno, born and raised. Thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you. Can we read the proclamation, please? We're going to read your proclamation. Here it is.
Whereas we admire and appreciate the contributions you have made to the sport of boxing while representing the city of Fresno. Graduating from Sunnyside High School as a valedictorian in 2017 and a first-generation college student at California State University Fresno, you have exemplified what it means to be a scholar-athlete. We celebrate you as a two-time world amateur champion, representing Team USA, 17-time national champion, three-time national silver-gloves champion, two-time national Junior Olympics and ringside world champion. And whereas we also like to wish you the best of luck in your training for the upcoming 2020 Summer Olympics in Tokyo. On behalf of the Fresno City Council and Mayor Lee Bran, we hereby proclaim Thursday, November 14, 2019 to be Mark Castro Day in the city of Fresno.
Thank you very much. I think this is the closest I'll ever get to a felt, but thanks for sharing it with me. I love it. Can I keep? No, I'm just kidding. Congratulations, Mark. Keep up the good work. Go Dogs. Thank you. Congratulations, everyone, and thank you for being here. And it's really inspirational to see the diversity of the ceremonials we have here and how fortunate we are as a city of Fresno to have so many people care so much about our community and to take the time to be here. So congratulations to each and every one of you. We're going to move on the agenda farther now. We're going to go to the consent calendar. Is there anyone on the council wish to pull a consent item? Oh. I thought I could get away without reports and comments, but they caught me. All right. So now we're going to go to Councilmember Reports and Comments. Member Carbasi is first up on my screen, followed by Member Arias.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank my residents in Northwest Fresno who showed up to our first neighborhood meeting. It was at Forkner Elementary this time. We had a great turnout. They brought up a lot of issues. And I want to thank Scott Mosher for attending, Captain Burke Farah, and Miguel Ramirez from the city. I want to thank Will Stoll of Northwest Fresno Church for representing the Northwest Fresno community with that wonderful invocation. And lastly, we talked about snitches get stitches last week. So someone got some stitches, but she's a wonderful person and that's the wife of our council president. And all of us have a card for her that we signed, including city manager and our city attorney and clerk. And we really hope that she does well and just give her our best, please.
I'd say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Uh, Member Arias?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make an announcement that I have front row tickets to the Bernie Sanders rally. So Councilmember Brettafield, you're welcome to sit right next to me. See you Friday.
Okay, Member Sparza, see what you can do now.
Not sure I can top all that. On a more serious note, yesterday had the privilege of seeing the hard outcome results of our CDBG funds. We, the city at one point allocated CDBG funds to be used for rehabilitation of housing. And we had this constituent in my, my district. We went, we went a few months ago, back in July, to actually check out the conditions of her home. Holes in the roof, I mean, complete holes in the roof at different parts of the rooms, the home, very dilapidated. So we got her out of there and thanks to Habitat for Humanity and the CDBG funds as well as private funds that were raised. Yesterday, we got to celebrate her moving back in. It was very, very moving sort of a process that we went through and blindfolded her, pulled her up, and she hadn't seen the house, the home since, since July. So just want to let the public know, but also let my, my colleagues know, right? When we allocate this, this money, that it really is making a true difference in the lives of our constituents. Earlier this week, over at Roosevelt High School, I wanted, I wanted to thank the Fresno PD, our Fresno County DA, Fresno County Public Defender for coming out, sending representatives to speak to our students at Roosevelt, who were actually on a public service, public safety pathway. We had about 80 students, 80 students show up. Only, I think, 30 of them were there in the class period and the rest, the other 50 got permission from their teachers to come out and attend this event in the library. And they were there for a couple hours, just listening to these speakers and asking questions. And it was really great to provide that opportunity for those students to interact. So I want to thank all those different agencies. And I want to thank Councilmember Brettafield, actually, and the other folks who were involved with the Fresno Veterans Memorial that I'm sure you're going to talk about here in a bit. It was a great event and we have memorialized these heroes here right in front of City Hall. So everybody who walks in is going to be able to see that. So I appreciate everyone's work on that.
Thank you guys for this card for my wife. Took the window away from me for a second. She sustained a hand injury about three weeks ago and 70 stitches to keep all her fingers attached. So she's making a good recovery. So thanks. I also wanted to indicate that it was fantastic on Monday to spend the day with so many of my elected colleagues and all the citizens of Fresno that came out for the 100th, 100th Veterans' Day Parade in the city of Fresno. And it's not only the largest in the state of California, it's the largest in the USA and that makes it the largest in the world. So it was great to see the veterans and all the people come out and cheering on the veterans and it was just really an exciting day. So thanks to everybody that participated. The Fresno State Men's Basketball Team had a great win last Sunday. They beat the Winthrop Eagles. It was a last-second buzzer beater. It was incredible and it was, it was fantastic. And it was the icing on the cake because that day was the day that we retired Paul George's jersey as a Fresno State Bulldog. So the number 24, when you go to the rafters, you'll see it, Paul George. He's still with the Clippers. He's making a comeback. He's on injured reserve right now. He'll be coming back to the Clippers. I think he's a five-time NBA All-Star. He's just a phenomenal player. The beauty of the, the day for me was he does not, did not, and will not forget Fresno and Fresno State. And he's so thankful and grateful to the university and the coaches for helping him achieve the moments of his career and this future moments that will be coming to him. He's a fantastic individual. On Saturday, November 16, from 8 to 2, that's coming up, Eldorado Park will be hosting a block party and that's at 1338 East San Ramon Avenue. We've got to thank the Parks Department, our Public Works Department for helping set this up. So it's going to be exciting and Pam from Coach, she's back in the neighborhood. She was a superstar and helped us get Eldorado Park where it is today. It is a lot of work and energy by a lot of people, but I want to say thanks to Pam and for being, for returning. Then yesterday was a fantastic day. I mentioned a little bit earlier, for my family, my mom turned 93 and I told her I would put it on the record for posterity. She's really shy about that, but happy birthday, Mom. And then my daughter, who's graduating from Fresno State, she was honored with admission to the Fresno State Graduate Program in Speech Pathology. So she'll be going for her masters. I'm so proud of her. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Okay, we'll go to the consent calendar. Is there any member that would like to pull any item from the consent calendar? If you'll punch up. I see a Member Carbasi first.
I just want to register a no vote on item 1K.
What I, I'll go out of turn myself. I want to pull 1K so we can address that at 1:30 this afternoon. Anything else, Member Carbasi? No. Uh, Member Soria?
I wanted to pull item 1A.
1A, is it an apple? Anything else? No? Okay. Uh, Member Brettafield?
No.
You're good? Okay, the screen is clear. We'll take it out to the public. Anyone in the public wish to come up and address any item on the consent calendar? This is the opportunity and we will hear item 1K and 1A in detail at 1:30. Anyone like to come up and address the council? Give us your name and your address and you'll have three minutes. Okay, the, I see no one coming up. So we have, is there a motion on the balance? Motion by Member Chavez, second by Member Brettafield. Is there any opposition? Consent calendar passes 7-0. Thank you. Next, we're going to go to Schedule, Council Hearings and Matters. That's on page eight or six, rather, of your program, our agenda. It's a 10:00 AM resolution initiating comprehensive update to the Fresno General Plan. Was that continued to December 5? Okay. Excellent. Next, we will go to, we're a little ahead of schedule. Makes me happy. We will go to General Administration and item 3A, page 7, actions pertaining to 2017 Transformative Climate Communities Grant. And this is sponsored by City Manager's Office. Good morning.
Courtney Espinoza, Program Implementation Manager for the TCC grant. The item you have before you is to award a contract with the Fresno Metro Black Chamber as a lead partner for the Clean Shared Mobility Project. This project works with local organizations to establish a low-carbon transit system of electric vehicles and bike shares, provide low-cost or no-cost services to transform Fresno project area. The partner and myself are available here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that presentation. This is the opportunity for our community to come forward. If anyone wishes to address this, please step up and give us your name and address. Seeing none, we'll come back to the dius. Member Arias, you're first up, followed, you're it.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to remind the council that this is part of the TCC Transformative Climate Communities Grant and these expenditures are fully funded by the state grant provided to Fresno in the amount of nearly $70 million. And it looks like we're on schedule and hopefully will remain on budget as we go forward. So would I like to make a motion to approve?
Motion by Member Arias, second by Member Chavez. Member Chavez, you're up next.
Yeah, just had a couple of quick questions. So just want to kind of get an overview of the services. Do we have Tara? Is Tara here? Oh, just a quick question, Tara. So maybe just a quick overview on the mobility, the shared mobility network program would help.
Sure. The program as proposed is to operate a ride-share, car-share, and van pool to install electric vehicle supply infrastructure equipment, also known as chargers, throughout the community or the TCC project area and to operate an electric bike share.
Oh, so it, so it does have the electric bike share component?
It does indeed.
And that would be for the TCC area or downtown specific or certain areas?
The entire project area, downtown Chinatown and Southwest.
All right. Great. That's, that's, just wanted to hear that from folks and I'll maybe set up a meeting with you later and just kind of go a little bit on some ideas I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions? The screen is clear. We do have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Passes 7-0. Thank you. Next, we'll go to item 3C. Oh, is that me? Item 3C, actions pertaining to the capital improvement projects within the city of Fresno. This is Public Works. Then we'll go to 3D and back up to 3B later.
Good morning, Council President and members of council. I'm Bill Herr, Assistant Director of Public Works. Before you this morning is a, four consultant contracts, agreements, three of which are for materials testing and acceptance and one is for independent assurance. Basically, the difference between the two contracts is the independent assurance, a consultant will certificate the technicians of the other three laboratories that qualify our, our materials. This program is required as part of our federal highways grants. And the Quality Assurance Program has a certain level of testing we do on all of our aggregates and concrete and asphalt, those kinds of things. So if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer.
Thank you for that presentation. We'll go to the community. Anyone wish to come forward on this item? Please do so. Seeing none, we'll bring them back to the dius here. The screen is clear. That's a signal for motion, somebody. Pay attention. Motion by, hello? Member by, motion by Member Arias, second by Member Soria.
For our council business.
And, and a Member Chavez wishes to participate in that motion. So I guess I'll be the second. And with that, is there any opposition? Passes 7-0. Thanks. 3D actions pertaining to the City Hall of Municipal Services Center. This is District 3 and it's sponsored by Public Works again. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Council President, councilmembers, and our deputy city clerks. If we can pull up the presentation, which is in your packets. We're pleased to bring this item forward to you today. There are seven different actions associated with it. A couple months ago, we were before the council talking about a citywide strategic plan for energy efficiency. And as promised, we are bringing forward the, the first contract of that, which is focused upon the Municipal Services Center, along with City Hall. Two facilities where there were a lot of opportunities for energy savings identified and we're excited about that, not only for the energy savings, but also things like just improving our efficiency, saving money to city departments, to customers, to the taxpayers, and then also things like improving sustainability, reducing carbon footprint and all the like. So a lot, a lot of goals. So overall, this project, $5.5 million, is in response to a request for qualifications that was issued earlier this year. And I first want to thank our city attorney, Doug Sloan, Chief Assistant City Attorney, Katie Dorr, and Brandon Collette, worked very closely with us on that RFQ, just for the competitive process, charter compliance and such. I want to just first say thanks to Doug and his staff, his team for that. It was a comprehensive competitive process. We had... also things like improving sustainability, reducing carbon footprint and all the like. So a lot, a lot of goals. So overall, this project, five and a half million dollars, is in response to a request for qualifications that was issued earlier this year. And I first want to thank our city attorney, Doug Sloan, Chief Assistant City Attorney, Katie Dorr, and Brandon Collette, worked very closely with us on that RFQ, just for the competitive process, charter compliance and such. I want to just first say thanks to Doug and his staff, his team for that. It was a comprehensive competitive process. We had nine respondents to that RFQ, which involves statements of qualification from design-build teams. As is the practice with that, there are varying levels of capabilities. We don't put every, every team, every firm through an interview process, so a shortlisting process was utilized, very common, very typical practice. So three, three final firms and teams participated in that interview. The panelists represented multiple city departments, including our finance department, because our RFQ was for design, build and finance. The key was that this project needed to pay for itself and the city did not want to front, front the dollars to implement it. So out of that process, we tentatively selected Alliance Building Solutions, ABS, and then proceeded to detail out the project and with that comes the contract, the scope and the proposal. They've been in business since 1964. We thoroughly vetted the references and their municipal experience. Also want to highlight to the council, they were the only company, and we drilled down to this level both in their proposals and in the interview process, they were the only company willing to risk doing this comprehensive analysis prior to being under contract. So they did that at, at their risk. But that's the process that we had outlined. So overall, the project includes energy audits, securing the financing, preparing those detailed recommendations and a money-back guarantee on the project. So this is really critical, that there's not the risk of that we do this and then what if, what if it doesn't pan out? What if the savings are not there? There, it's in the contract that's before you, as the council too, that we'd recommend approval. And they've been very supportive and patient of our process. This is a new territory really for city of Fresno. So overall, what's in the project? What are the items in these two facilities? One, I know council is very familiar with City Hall, also at our Municipal Services Center. We have numerous buildings, that facility is utilized by everyone from street maintenance to our landscape, parks operation, facilities. We have solid waste housed there, ISD, fire, police, fleet operations, all together and those departments and divisions all pay for the O and M. So they're great benefits to everyone. It includes things, I know we've talked before as council and staff about things like LED lighting upgrades for energy efficiency, 20 different buildings, the, actually the heating, ventilation, air conditioning systems, the HVAC, five different buildings, controls, so temperature controls to save money, 19 buildings. Actually, the solar, solar, the solar votaic, the power generation, two sites. We've even been able to include roof replacement on two buildings and deck coating on two buildings. So overall, five and a half million dollar project right now, but the total savings over 25 years is 10.4 million. So we really get through 15 years where the financing would occur and then a little bit of savings in there and then the last 10 years are the really big ones where essentially that's, as we'd say, that's all gravy. You get through, we get new stuff, we've addressed deferred maintenance, a lot of things we're excited about and then on top of that, we have this big savings of nearly 5 million. So no out-of-pocket cost to the city. One question that I received was why, why not have an annual appropriations resolution, a budget item with this and that's because there'd be no out-of-pocket cost to the city. So cost payments are born out of our existing utility billing appropriations, maintenance appropriations, so that, that's all really good news. What we're asking the council to approve with the financing is a rate not to exceed 2.95%. Reason being, we wrestled with this in preparing the agenda item. One option would have been just to ask council to approve, approve this financing package 2.95% and we're good, but we, we're asking council just to leave the door open with staff, that we can pursue even lower rates to be able to replace some of that 2.5, 5.5 million in lending with a lower rate. If that doesn't happen, it's a great project and it works, works without it, but we'd certainly appreciate the opportunity to, to even bring that lower if possible. Meanwhile, there are very significant financial savings and benefits to moving forward right now and getting a lot of things done, for example, like our council chamber lighting, which is part of that scope. So we're very confident on the results. The vendor would be contractually obligated to deliver that and meet those savings and we're confident enough that following year one, staff would propose to come back and provide the council a full report on what's been done and where we land on the actual savings that are guaranteed. And with that, I'd like to briefly introduce Brad Chapman, who's the Principal of Alliance Building Solutions and he's going to talk just a little more details about the project scope and especially the solar, which I know there is a lot of excitement for. All right, Brad.
Welcome, Mr. Chapman. Thanks for being here today. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. President, council and staff. Thanks for having us here today. I'll go through this really quick as I know you're all busy and answer any questions that you might have. So as Scott said, yes, this is a completely self-funded project. The project will be paid for through the savings in your utility reduction. Right now, very conservative savings. We plan on reducing the utility here at City Hall by over 17% and at MSC by over 40% through that with new lighting, solar, controls and the way we operate your building. And I've been told that, that should we be fortunate to move forward, I have to have my team out in the parking lot the minute you sign contracts to do this area right here with new lighting controls. So we understand that. You're going to get about almost 2 megawatts of solar between here and MSC and in the parking lot out here, we understand that there has to be some tree removal. We plan on taking any tree that we have to, to remove and relocate that somewhere else in the city where staff directs us to do that. So you're not going to lose any trees or any bushes. Those will be just relocated. At MSC, we're going to take apart the solar system that's there that's dilapidated, that's not working and redo that with, with current technology. And I knew you were going to give me this, so which button do I push? The green one?
The right one.
The right one? Okay. So here's an overview of the MSC. You can see it's all rooftop and parking structure, carports. Oh, we don't have a lighting slide. So between MSC and City Hall, there's going to be over 6,000 new LED lights and light fixtures, interior and exterior. There's going to be approximately 16 new high-efficiency, large HVAC units replaced that have been in the budget that we're removing. We're also doing four roofs over at MSC, all things that now don't have to be paid for out of budget, they'll all be paid through savings. And then we're putting a new control system for your lighting system here and new controls at the MSC yard. And as, as Scott said, for a $5 million project, there's going to be over $10 million in savings.
That's impressive, very impressive.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
All right, thank you. And we'll call you back with any questions?
Okay.
And Scott, if you, are you going to conclude your presentation?
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President. Just in closing, I wanted to highlight, and you have this slide in your packet, on the environmental benefits, we thought it would be helpful just to see what nearly a million kilowatt hours of savings annually, what that looks like. So by comparison, that would be 1.6 million miles driven by a passenger vehicle and taking, taking that off the road. And you can see we're 25,000 incandescent lamps switched over to LED. So we're really excited about it, feel there's been a lot of hard work to identify every dollar of savings that we can bring and again, make city of Fresno more sustainable and have a lot more green technology. So with that, council, you have the materials, you have the list of recommended action items and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. That was really, really comprehensive, Scott. You really went deep on that, which we appreciate. So we'll take it out to the public. Anyone in the public want to come forward and give us your opinion on this project? We'd be happy to hear from you. Seeing none, we'll close public here and come back to the dius, member Arias.
Thank you, Council President. Scott, I have a few questions for you on the scope of work. If the council recalls when we gave direction for staff to pursue solar energy and renewable energy as a city, we outlined that we wanted to see all our facilities, including our, our multiple parks who have significant empty parking lots, to have solar installed, but disagreement only addresses a few of the buildings. What's the plan for that and why, why weren't parks included in this scope of work?
Council, as far as the scope of work, we're tackling that in phases. We're preparing to release a follow-up RFQ and again, I apologize. Ann Cluse, she's on a planned vacation and been working hard on this. She's been working on a request for qualifications for park facilities and then also for public safety facilities. So the intent of that, we think there's a lot of value for parks, both for parking lots, for roofs, at community centers, LED lighting conversions in the parking lots. So we opted to do that just so we could, we could tackle this in pieces. A lot of work had occurred already at, at the Municipal Services Center and City Hall prior to that council's direction. So we're able to get this done and then you'll be seeing back in the spring, some additional items and projects related to both parks and public safety and yes, absolutely to solar.
Okay. And then on the scope of work, I also noticed on the layout for City Hall that you're not including any charging stations part of these upgrades, so why is that?
We, we have been working with the City Manager's Office on a parallel pilot program for electric vehicle charging stations and if Ann were here, I, she could speak a little better to that than I could, but our Assistant City Manager's been involved and.
Yes, Ann has been working on a comprehensive plan, put charging stations throughout the city, not just here at City Hall. I don't have the detailed information, but we're at the point where we've identified numerous locations to do that and are working with potential suppliers to do so.
When I've seen solar projects of this magnitude take place, they do it all at the same time. It makes the economy to scale easier for you to put solar panels and charging stations at the same time. Why wasn't that included in this scope of work?
And council, I was well reminded by Mr. Chapman from ABS that they will be doing all of the trenching and electrical work in conjunction with the solar panels so that it will be ready to go. The reason why that last piece is not there is typically, electric vehicle charging stations are done on some type of lease agreement with another vendor who is, is really focused and specialized in that business. So we're doing, I would estimate, we're doing about 95% of the work related to the EV charging stations. The, the infrastructure, getting it to the stalls and to that site is really key. That enables it to be a pretty quick and low-cost operation for the actual vendor we would enter into an agreement with for.
You're going to do all the trenching and infrastructure as part of this, so how many charging stations do you plan to put in City Hall since you already?
I don't have that information, but I do, you know, the exact numbers, but I do know we're looking at the promenade lot as well as some locations here in this, this facility's lot.
But how can you do trenching for it if you don't know how many stations you're going to put up and where?
Well, our engineers are pretty smart guys and I think they can figure that out.
Yes, and it would be, and the goal is really dig ones, so the conduit and the, the wiring, the conductor would be sized such that it can handle those. The load from those will not be an issue with what we're doing here.
The piece on this agreement calls for, who's going to do the work? Your workforce, where, are they coming from? High desert? Where are the employees coming to do this work from?
So we have locations in, in North Los Angeles and San Diego, but one of the, the business models that we follow that separates us from our competition is we've already met with your local ABC offices that handle all the mechanical and electrical contractors for this area and we'll be hiring as much local talent as we can. That is kind of our business model as we go from city to city is we'll hire and then what we try to do is keep those people on staff for future jobs.
Would this be a prevailing wage in United's work?
Yes, it is. Everything's prevailing wage.
Okay. And then Scott, you mentioned that you want us to leave the door open on the financing aspect for securing potentially lower financing options. Our initial hesitation when we were going to discuss this last week was the direct involvement of PG&E financing this work. As you know, PG&E's future is unstable to, to say the least and it's unclear what's going to happen with that private company, given the significant risk that they have in liabilities. In this contract, what is the association, the connection to PG&E as a company?
Within this contract, there's no assumption that any of the financing would come through 0% on-bill financing with PG&E. That, that would only be a bonus or improve the, the return on investment that we would have. So as, as written, the recommendation would leave the door open for city manager to enter into financing agreement to lower that rate, nothing higher to lower it. As, you know, as an alternative, if there is apprehension today with PG&E, another option for council certainly would be to approve the, not to exceed 2.95% with the ABS financing with the lender and require any PG&E on-bill finance to come back to the council. We're not, the staff were not opposed to that. Certainly, it's, it's very efficient and clean to move forward, but if there's a desire to have any PG&E on-bill finance scenario, come back before the council, as I said, that we're not opposed to it.
Thank you, Scott. So.
There's no involvement in, with PG&E on this contract at all at this point? No, no, they're not involved in the project. It's a, a contract between the city and ABS. Is that correct?
Correct. And I'd echo Jim's comments. Unlike, the, the streetlight project was very unique that PG&E delivered a turnkey service and financing was included. PG&E is not involved in the lease in any turnkey. That's all done by, would all be done by the contractor, prevailing wage, local forces, they work with, you know, the local labor unions, with folks coming on board, so that would all be done. PG, actually, it's not really PG&E so much. The California Public Utilities Commission, CPUC, has a 0% on-bill finance program. We actually utilized that several years ago, first phase of street lighting, some members were on the council then, we did a $250,000 project. We performed it with another contractor. The only thing PG&E did was let us finance it on, on bill.
Scott, just to clarify, and maybe this is for legal counsel, the contract as written, would it allow the city manager to enter an agreement with PG&E without coming back to the city council?
The contract with Alliance Building Solutions does not contemplate that at all. Action item number seven, which is to authorize the city manager to enter financing agreement not to exceed 2.95%, that, that would enable that action without coming back, but as I shared.
If the council desires, we're more than happy to come back before we enter into that agreement.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm, I'm very supportive of the item and the intent and the goal. I, I think it's fair to say that this is Fresno's Green New Deal, although might make some of my colleagues a little itchy, but I want to be very thoughtful of the concerns that we have about our relationship with PG&E, given the reality of the, of the market and their status. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve, but include an amendment that item number seven would have to come back to the council for formal approval.
Second.
Motion by member Arias, second by member Soria. I have member Soria, the floor is yours.
And really quick, if I may, legal counsel, Jim, is that language sufficient for you guys to move forward and come back with any change to the financing agreement?
I believe so.
Yes.
Thank you.
And member Soria.
Thank you, Council President and thank you, Scott. And then I know that there's been staff answering a number of questions that myself and my staff had over the course of the week and so we appreciate that. I appreciate the answers that were given to Council member Arias. My biggest concern was kind of the, along the lines of transparency and making sure that you staff would come back to us to make sure that we knew what kind of financing we would enter into beyond the amount that we've already secured. So I'm extremely supportive of this Fresno's Green New Deal. I think that it is important to think about how we are making our environment better, looking at renewable sources of energy like solar. I think we're, this has been a long time coming, so I'm extremely supportive. I also believe that making good faith efforts to hire local workers is extremely important for me and I know for many of our colleagues, we've had several conversations over the last few years about how we improve the lives of people that live. last few years about how we improve the lives of people that live here in the city of Fresno. These are their taxpayer dollars, and it's best to put them to work first and prioritize them. So I know that maybe we can't require, but I would like to include something in the agreement, and I think that if our legal counsel can help us, but maybe include some language that would say that the contractor would make a good faith effort to hire local workers in our community. We know that our local building trades have a great pre-apprentice and apprentice program. I believe this is a good project where we can see our people entering into that line of work and building the future workforce through these types of projects. So very supportive, but those are the things that I'd like to see, one, along the lines that Councilmember Arias mentioned, coming back to the council to make sure that this council knows what other types of financing we are going to secure or enter into in any future agreements, and then also that we include in the agreement a good faith effort to hire local workers. I know that we've heard it from the contractor, but I'd like to include it as part of the agreement.
Thank you.
Councilmember Soria, are you asking that be added to the motion?
Yes, we'll add it to the motion.
Second.
I just would like to confirm the contractor is willing to accept that.
We're absolutely fine with that.
Thank you.
And we'll do our best.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Next up is Member Brettafield.
Yes, Scott, I was ready to support this until I heard this was the Fresno's Green New Deal. I didn't know that.
I don't think Scott termed that.
Councilmember, don't make me pull my Bernie Sanders invitation back.
First of all, there's a $10.4 million savings over the course of 10 years?
That's over the course of 25 years.
25 years. Okay. Well, that's not part of any Green New Deal, and there's no government mandate, right? We're opting to do this. There's real cost savings. And unlike AOC's Green New Deal, this is not going to bankrupt the city, right?
There's no cash out of pocket and savings to the city, so then that affects both taxpayers, it affects our public utilities, our ratepayers, our customers. So they're going to see lower bills as a result.
Okay, I'm happy to support this. So, thank you.
Next up is Member Carbasi.
I just want to thank administration and Scott for putting this together and showing a real commitment to Fresno about the importance of renewable energy. And there's two forms of the Green New Deal. There's one where it's good for the environment, there's another one where it's good for taxpayers, and you guys have done a great job. Thank you for that.
Member Sparza.
Yes, Scott, I'm looking through the documents here, looking for, is there like a line item to sort of where each, this $5 million is going, line by line? I know there's probably about eight different documents here. Is that available to us?
That is, the estimate is in there, and let me ask Mr. Chapman to just briefly walk through kind of the big categories where you see those dollars.
Yes, so we can provide a document. I believe Ann has it, but I'll make sure that you guys get it. And basically, it'll break down, it'll break down every item and where that item is located, the cost of that item, the savings that that item produces, and then it'll also have an overhead and a profit breakout, so you'll know exactly where every dollar's being spent.
Okay, yeah, my concern was just not seeing that line item, and then we weren't sure about even the number of charging stations. And I don't want to see you back up here asking for more money here in the future.
And I apologize for interrupting. Part of our project is, is not only the guarantee of the savings and making up that difference if it doesn't exist, but our projects are not allowed to have change orders. So what you see, if we run into an issue, that's on us.
Oh, sounds good.
Mr. Chapman, how long is that, how many pages is that line item list you have?
The spreadsheet that shows the breakouts, it's just one document, it's one page.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Screen is clear. Mr. Chapman, thanks for being up here. Appreciate you, appreciate your company and all the things you've done. Scott and your team have done a thorough, thorough back check, front check, side check on this process and this project, so I'll be happy to support it. We have a motion in a second. Is there any opposition? Passes 7-0. All right, we'll go back to our 10:30 item since, that is the resolution of the city approving bond proceeds. And this is the, sponsored by the city in its capacity as a housing successor to the redevelopment agency, the city of Fresno.
Which item?
Good morning. Thanks for being here.
Good morning, council members, council president. Enrique Mendez with the successor agency. I'm here seeking approval for a bond proceeds expenditure agreement between the successor agency and the city of Fresno as the housing successor. One of the missions of the former redevelopment agency was to implement the urban redevelopment plan for the Mariposa area. To implement that plan, tax allocation bonds were issued in 1993 between the agency and the Bank of New York, and in 2003, the agency refunded those bonds with tax allocation refunding bonds. As of the most recent accounting, the sum of approximately $478,000 remains in the Mariposa redevelopment fund unspent as excess bond proceeds. Pursuant to provisions of the redevelopment dissolution law, the successor agency is permitted to spend these excess bond proceeds in compliance with the bond covenants. Your approval today would allow these excess bond proceeds to be listed on the successor agency's recognized obligation payment schedule for the 2021 fiscal year. Upon approval of the countywide oversight board and Department of Finance, the funds would be transferred to the city in its capacity as housing successor to be used for projects, activities, and improvements within or beneficial to the project area. Thank you for consideration.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you for your presentation, appreciate that. Member Soria makes a motion, I'll second it, we'll take it to the public. Anyone in the community want to come up and talk to us about this? Please come up. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. Member Soria, do you have any other comments other than the motion? Okay. Screen is clear, is there any opposition? Passes 6-0. Member Carbasi, are you with us? Yes, he is. It passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to indicate on item 1K, I have cards from David and Zach, if you're still here, that'll be heard at 1:30. So we pull that item from the consent calendars, those items are heard at 1:30. Okay, so we are going to go to... 3E, actions pertaining to the new fire station 18 project. Public Works again.
Good morning, Council President, council members. I'm Debbie Bernard with the Department of Public Works Facilities Management Division. And what you have before you is the request for approval of the 15th Amendment to the Annual Appropriation Resolution, AAR number 2019-133, appropriating $3,419,600 to fund the new fire station number 18 project, which includes $1,019,600 through defunded urban growth management, UGM appropriations as a funding source. Adopt finding of a categorical exemption pursuant to section 15, 332, class 32 of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA guidelines. Approve inter-fund loan agreements from the UGM area-wide oversized sewer fund and the UGM wellhead treatment area 101-S fund for the new fire station number 18 pursuant to Article 6 of the City of Fresno Reserve Management Act and Article 4 of the Taxpayer Protection Act, providing for a cumulative $3,857,700 loan. Award a construction contract to Klosen Corporation of Bakersfield, California for $6,260,000 for the construction of new fire station number 18 on Shaw Avenue west of Highway 99 in District 1. New permanent fire station number 18 was identified as a high priority project in the city's adopted budget for fiscal year 2020. On June 20, 2019, the council approved an increase in the citywide fire facilities impact fee in order to ensure that new development is paying its appropriate share toward the cost of new fire facilities. With this increased revenue, the city is in position to approve an inter-fund loan from two other development impact fee funds. Loan proceeds will be repaid over a five-year period, including interest accrued at the city's pooled investment rate, using revenue from the citywide fire facilities impact fee. Therefore, staff recommends that council approve the 15th Amendment to AAR number 2019-133, adopt finding of categorical exemption pursuant to section 15, 332, class 32 of the SEQA guidelines. Approve inter-fund loan agreements from the UGM area-wide oversized sewer fund and the UGM wellhead treatment area 101-S fund, and award a construction contract to Klosen Corporation of Bakersfield, California for $6,260,000 for the construction of new permanent fire station number 18 located at 6605 West Shaw Avenue. Staff is present to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll bring it up to the public. Anyone in our community want to come forward, talk about this fire station? This is your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Motion's approved.
And we are, Member Soria is up first.
Thank you, Council President. I will be supportive of this item. I know that we've had several conversations over the last couple of years about how to bring the permanent fire station to the west area, so I'm grateful that we were able to find a way to make this happen and that we're actually voting on it today. The only question that I did want to ask, since in the previous item we discussed, making sure that we are looking at energy savings for, you know, to make sure that we're saving our taxpayer dollar. In terms of this public facility that we're building and then future public facilities, are we looking at building it so that they're more energy efficient? If it, does it have, is it going to have solar to make sure that that's part of the long-term cost savings?
Currently, it is not designed with solar in mind. However, it does have all of, the lighting will be LED, it has onsite water retention, low water usage, and there are discussions about charging stations for the station.
So is there any way that we can include solar as part of? I think that that should be kind of, as we're looking at building new facilities, that that should be kind of our standard. If we, I would hate to have to come back later, you know, five years from now and say, hey, now it's time to add solar. Why aren't we looking at that as part of our kind of standard, especially for new public facilities? I think that we should look at that, be looking at that.
Yes, good morning, Council. Scott Mosier, Public Works. So we did discuss this near the tail end of the design, and what we wrestled with was, do we modify the plans right now and include, attempt to include rooftop solar? What that would have done is increased the construction cost. We would reap benefits in terms of operating savings for the fire department, but we would need to borrow more money, come up with more capital dollars upfront. And that would be a scenario where the city would own, own the solar upfront. We're not entirely convinced that that's the best alternative, so, and also given the urgency of getting the fire station in construction due to the public safety needs in the area, I have tasked Ann Cluse, our sustainability manager, with including this facility in the RFQ to solar firms and also the EV charging station program, wherein we could potentially, a lot of businesses and agencies will lease, lease solar facilities. And so that leaves the door open at station 18, that we can, we can make that happen. Another alternative would be to ask the contractor after award for a cost proposal to incorporate into the project, and then we would have to evaluate that and see how, how we could potentially fund that. And that would be a change order to do so.
I think in our earlier discussion, Scott mentioned that the MSC and City Hall were the first phases of energy efficient upgrades. I, and I can't help myself, I have to say this, solar is not a panacea for all things. We would look at the energy efficiency as a whole, and we would also look at solar to see if that makes sense on facilities, and then we would move forward. In this case, it probably does make sense, but then we have to look at solar and the installation and how we're going to finance it, where that funding is going to come from, whether we should buy our own solar or do a purchase, power purchase agreement. Those are the types of things that Scott and his staff, particularly Ann, will be looking at. We will be looking at every park facility, every public safety facility, and making those decisions and bringing those to council for your approval. That's the same process we'll be using for charging systems and vehicle charging systems, particularly at a fire station. We had that discussion. What vehicles will you charge at that station? There are no fire, electric fire trucks yet. So the whole charging discussion is really based on where the practical uses are. We are looking at charging and electric vehicles for fax and their relief vehicles. They happen to have a fleet of 25 relief vehicles that put on a lot of mileage, and it makes sense for them to have a significant number of chargers for those light vehicles that would augment the chargers we're putting in for the buses. So I want to make sure everybody up here on the dais understands that we are looking at those things and are trying to make decisions that make sense for the city and will provide a benefit to the city and its constituents.
Thank you, Jim, for that. And I understand that there's a sense of urgency to build the permanent fire station given the needs and the calls for service west of the 99, so I get that. But I also think that we have to think long-term when we're doing this, and without, and just because we have a sense of urgency doesn't mean that we just skip over it. So I get it. I will kind of give it a pass this time, but I do expect that, I'll be supportive of the motion, understanding that we're going to bring this back sooner rather than later. I don't want to have to exit this building and it not be discussed as a, as part of the kind of long-term project for energy savings.
Our next phase will either be parks or fire or everything. I should say, public safety. That's about all we got left.
Okay, Member...
Well, I'm not done, sorry. And the other thing that I would just ask, as we're looking at building additional public facilities, I know that we're in conversations about our SPCA and building a new building or whatnot. I think that that conversation should be happening. So just as part of a reminder that we should be looking at those options as we're looking at building new public facilities. I believe that that should be the standard. Maybe, yeah, maybe solar's not the panacea, but I think that we need to look at what are the options to make sure that in the long-term we are saving? Because, you know, it was just mentioned, right now Scott said, long-term it makes sense because it is operational savings. That means that if these fire stations are saving in operations, that means there's a savings in a general fund that could be used for other things. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmember Soria. Scott, I have huge and significant concerns with the financing of the fire station. Walk me through the numbers. So the impact fees, which from my understanding are supposed to pay for fire stations, right? That's why we charge developers impact fees. They create a need and a demand for new public facilities. We take their fees, use them to build those public facilities. In this case, we're financing this fire station that development created demand for through public utilities accounts?
These are, so counsel, these are development impact fees, and they would be fully repaid with interest earnings within, projected within the five years. So the true funding source for is $3.5 million of general fund already in the adopted budget, and then the increase is basically a $3.4 million transfer this year. Overall, it's a $3.8 million loan from those two UGM. One is an oversized sewer fee, and the other is a wellhead, wellhead treatment fee. That's the northeast Fresno area. And those funds do have sufficient balances. It's not anticipated those dollars would be needed within these next five years for other purposes. And so they would be loaned as proposed. The reason that the development impact fees for fire do not have enough in that account just to fund this is that the fees essentially have been too low for too long a period. Council, staff, we greatly appreciate the action back in June to increase the fire facilities impact fee. So with that increase in place and with that immediately taking effect upon all development, that's why we'd recommend there would be revenue within five years to fully repay all those loans and... those loans and then that's squared away.
See, so, so what I struggle with is, the narrative has always been that existing residents subsidize growth. By definition, you're doing that today. You're using ratepayer funds from utilities to subsidize the new growth that occurred that isn't paying for the public safety facilities that are needed.
And Council, to clarify, these are not ratepayer funds. These are urban growth management funds paid for by developers toward capital facilities.
From existing residents, right?
Uh, no, they're actually not paid by, well, they, they've been paid by previous development. So for example, the oversized sewer fund, what, what that fee charges for, it's to reimburse developers for building sewer mains that are larger than eight inches in diameter. And-
Current residents are paying, are loaning money to, for the construction of this new facility?
Uh, well, the city, the city, these, these existing funds, they are development impact fees for purposes of building sewer mains to serve new development and to build a treat, basically what's called wellhead treatment. That's additional things like, it's called granular activated carbon, it's to add to well sites, and there has not been a need for that yet in northeast Fresno.
So why aren't we using the reserve fund for this? Isn't that what the reserve fund is? Why don't we borrow from the reserve fund versus the UGM fund?
You know, I, I have Mike Lima in the audience, our control, in the audience, sorry, in chambers to address questions about funding, as I figured this would come up. Mike, do you mind coming up?
Why did we choose this fund to borrow money from, to pay for this fire station? Why not use a thirty-five million dollar reserve fund that we have in the budget or carryover from the salary savings that we have in the budget?
Good morning, Council. Mike Lima, Finance Director for the city. The reason we don't use the emergency reserve is because there are very specific rules in the Reserve Management Act as to how to use it. There would have to be a declaration of fiscal emergency, and then a majority of council would have to rat, a supermajority, five votes, have to ratify the use of that. So there's a lot more strings attached to that. There's not as many strings attached to the, the funds that are being recommended, and that's why we've come forward with that. As for your other part, could we use salary savings from the general fund to pay this? Absolutely. That would be a four-vote item of council, and it would just be a matter of setting the priorities.
But the, but the salary savings are utilized to balance the budget in its entirety. So it's not like we have a pot of salary savings available.
Yeah, it's programmed. Yes, it would, it would be any carryover that, above and beyond what we have already budget, target, or built within the budget, that could be used for that.
So it's fair to say that the construction of this fire station is not an emergency? That's why you're not recommending that we use the reserve fund?
That is correct.
The questions that, the questions that the council member had about the design of this facility, we're under construction now in another public facility, which I understand it's already potentially over budget. What are we doing to make sure that this fire station doesn't go over budget? And can you reassure me that we're not building a Taj Mahal and there's going to be a whole bunch of upgrades that are not necessary?
Yes, Council. As to other projects, public facilities over budget, the, the awarded contract has a, then, we, we include in the budget here a ten percent construction contingency. That's an industry standard. We do not have another public facility that's over budget or that's over that contingency. We're working within the contingency for things that come up. And as to fire station eighteen, this is not exactly what the fire department would, would really want in terms of the wants list versus the needs and bare bones. This has been heavily value engineered. For example, the ideal building would really be all block construction, all the way up for maximum durability, and this one is basically block up to, yep, up, yeah, like thirty-six inches is block construction, and above that it's stick, above that it's stick frame construction. So those things together, I, I would estimate that we shaved about two to three million dollars off the construction cost of this fire station to, to be able to deliver to the council something that, that could be awarded, could be financed.
One last question on financing. Why don't we borrow the money since we expect to generate the impact fees to pay back the, the cost? Other cities borrow money for public facilities. Why, why don't we borrow it in terms of bonding it out, not internal funds?
So I'm going to ask Mike Lima to address. Briefly, I can share that between impact fee funds in California, that is very common to have inter-fund loans, simply because you could have one service area that has half the money for a facility of another area that has half the money, and it's very common and permissible under mitigation fee act, AB sixteen hundred, to have that inter-fund loan, to be able to have enough to build something. And then as, as developers pay those fees, then, then that gets, the loan gets-
I know it's, it's an acceptable, acceptable vehicle for building public safety, but another vehicle is just bonding out the public safety facility and having the development impact fees pay that, that bond back.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And we actually have that kind of structure on some of the fire stations that have already been built previously. In this case, we're only building one fire station. You're looking at three million dollars. The cost of issuance would be too high to justify that. And then in addition, bond takes a little longer, and probably we would not get the interest rate that we're going to be paying on this loan. So in all-
On the scale, interest rate?
On the scale, yes.
Okay, that makes sense. All right. I just want to, just remind the council that let's be very cautious on how we finance and structure these deals, because as my colleagues discussed, potentially opening up the sphere of influence in the general plan, the conversation is going to become very real about development paying for itself. And in my view, borrowing from an existing fund is not development paying for itself. So if you guys are setting this precedent, then you'll have to answer to how we finance these facilities in the long term. With that, thank you.
Okay, the screen is clear. Councilmember Karbasi, you want to go next?
Thank you, sir. Just want to ask Mr. Lima a question. This way we're funding it, this is not a precedent. This is the way we've done things before, correct?
We did the same exact financing structure to purchase the fire headquarters building.
Right. So we're not establishing a precedent today?
No, we are not.
Okay. My other question is regarding the Taj Mahal comment. So I've actually been on a few ride-alongs with the fire department. Mine was at station twelve, which has been a temporary station, I think, all my life. Firefighters have a very hard job. They have a higher rate of cancer than police officers or anyone else of the normal population because of their job. I don't like that comment very much, because I don't think they're asking for luxury, they're asking for safety. They ask for industrial washing machines so we can shake out the soot, which is carcinogenic, out of their uniforms, so we can hopefully reduce those cancer rates. So I, you know, I'm glad we're doing this, but I think we also have to be very sensitive of the fact that we're talking about our firefighters here. And yep, they get paid well, but they also risk their lives, and when they retire, that's when the cancer kicks in. So I want to thank you for all your work you've done on this.
Thank you.
Councilmember Karbasi, is that a second to my motion? Is that a second? Gary's going a second.
All right. Screen is clear. We've taken this out to the public, so is there any opposition to the motion? See none, passes seven zero. We're going to go to item, a resolution on page seven, designating positions which shall be subject to a conflict of interest code, sponsored by city clerk's office.
Just to go over what this item is, it's a resolution that we do every year, designating positions that may have a potential for conflicts of interest when making decisions, and they would need to also submit a seven-hundred form annually. So this contains the most current list. It's been reviewed by department directors and updated. Okay, so it's under the ten-thirty. It's the second part of the ten-thirty item.
No, member Sparza, thank you. You're up.
Yes, clerk, just quick question. I know this is a, a regular routine thing. Were there any positions added to this year's?
The changes have been updated on the document, but I don't have them handy to tell you exactly what was changed, but the department directors were asked to go through the list, make sure it matches the requirement, and only list those positions that could potentially have a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Member Arias?
I, I do have a question. On page thirteen, the police department, the list of positions doesn't include assistant chief. Why is that? I know the position exists. It's probably vacant, but it exists, and the new chief may fill it.
Right now, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe, is Jeff in the audience? Assistant chief exists in the salary resolution, but right now the position itself has been converted and a deputy chief is filling that position. So the position's there, and in fact, we could, Chief Hall, you are correct, at some point could fill that position if a conversion was done. And we're happy to add it.
Yeah, I, I would just make that change, that, that position be added, so that if he decides to fill it tomorrow, it would be covered by this policy.
And that's fine with us.
Make a motion to approve of that amendment.
Okay.
A motion by member Arias, second by member Brettafield. Everybody's shouting, so we don't, the screen is clear. I take it out to the public. Anyone in the public want to comment on this, please come forward. This would be the chance of a lifetime. All right. Public comment is closed. Screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the motion with the amendment? Passes seven zero.
Council President, can we skip down to, to four B? I'll try to make that, that resolution quick.
Four B, yes, that would be, resolution in support of construction of a senior center, sponsored by councilmember Sparza.
Yes.
Your wish has come true.
Yes, sir, thank you. So in the, during the budget hearings, I think we had a, a long conversation about having a senior center here in Fresno. We had a lot of folks come out here and support that effort. I started putting together this resolution just to sort of get the process started. There's been movement on the part of the community and looking at different sites and such, but not too much movement on the part of the, the city. So I'd like to see the city start to move in a direction where we're actually taking a look at different sites and just evaluating some options. So whether that comes in the form of a project manager or whether it comes in the form of existing staff on the part of the administration, this is just a very simple resolution saying, hey, we're going to get this process started.
Okay, motion by member Sparza, second by member Soria. Assistant City Manager, Shad, you have the floor?
Yes. Pardon me. Yes. First of all, I just wanted to state that our office was not contacted on this. It would have been nice to have that discussion for this meeting. My, my next question would be, where are the million dollars coming from? Our records show that that million dollars has not been appropriated yet. It's carryover money, and that has not been voted on, and it will be brought to the council in December.
Oh, yes, I apologize. I did actually, this was actually written prior to our, that, that budget meeting that we had, where I didn't realize, it came to my attention at that meeting, that the million that we allegedly had allocated was actually contingent on the carryover.
Okay.
So, so, I mean, I'm happy to make that amendment contingent on the carryover being allocated to begin this process.
Okay.
And, and, and I know that the administration has been helpful. I think we sent over a site that the, some of the senior citizens are taking me out to tour, and so you folks evaluated it and took a look at that site. But again, you know, it's one kind of a professional evaluation of the holistic-
The site we looked at, I believe, was about a five million dollar ask with an existing building, if I'm correct?
Correct, correct. But I'd like to see all, all the options, right? So that's, that's what I'm asking, to kind of broaden the, the scope and do what you guys do in order to see what the options are.
So here, here are some clarifications I would like to have. Are we looking, because the reso says, construction, are we looking to construct a new facility? Or as I've heard in the past, are we looking at leasing a facility? What are we looking at?
That's what I want your administration to explore.
Okay.
Yeah, we're looking for options.
And I assume that staff will have the leeway to look at those options as well as locations that make sense for the community?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and again, there are, there is an avid group of community activists, community senior citizens who are already kind of doing some of this footwork informally on their own, and I hope the administration will be hoping to continuing to work with them, meet with them.
The, the last question is just on funding. So we haven't identified funding beyond the million bucks. This type of facility, based on what I'm seeing, could be five to ten million. The funding we use may affect the decisions we make, and, and the strings attached to that funding may cause us to do the project differently. So we can do some preliminary work, but at some point, we're going to have to recognize what funding stream is going to, to fund this. And as an example, environmental work and a bid process will have to be compliant with that funding source. And I, I'm alluding to funding sources like CDBG or Prop sixty-eight grant. So what I would say is we can start working with the community groups to do some very preliminary analysis, but we really can't do much until that million dollars is voted on and much heavy-duty design or, or planning work until that funding is, is appropriated.
I understand the preliminary nature of this resolution and also the, the contingency of it. So I think we'll hopefully be having that carryover discussion soon, and anticipate this will likely be part of the conversation, and we can go from there.
I just, I, I, I see a million dollars, and I've, I've been in the audience in council for those debates in the past, and my concern is we're not going to get the community's hopes up by promising them to, that we'll deliver a, a senior center, only to find out that we haven't identified long-term funding to support it.
Sure, sure. And again, I mean, this is just, I mean, we're, what we're saying here is we're going to take it seriously by, by seriously evaluating options, whether it be, again, leasing or building and different sites and such.
I will work with my staff and have them continue the conversation with the community group.
Thank you.
We'll take it out to the public now, and I have a card from Carmen. If you hear Carmen, you'll have, give us your name and your address, and then you'll have three minutes to address the council. Thank you.
Good morning, or is it still morning? My name is Carmen Navarro, and I represent a quarter of the population, which is a senior group that most likely voted and elected you. However, we have no senior center. There is a number of reasons to have one. Mostly, it's the fifth-largest city in the state, and it's the only one that has no senior center. Here on Sanger, all these little cities around here found a way to fund a senior center. And a plan was developed by the Parks Department, and nothing has been done since then. Yes, we've met with different council members and Parks staff, but what they would like us to do is to go to some of the community centers that exist, and they will add a class or two. That is not a senior center. I didn't invite anybody to come and fill up the room today, because I was trying to get a reasonable time where this issue would, would come up, but I was not afforded that possibility. But if you want more seniors to attend these meetings, we will. I have to tell you that I appreciate those council members that look at what they're voting on and ask pertinent questions. And in terms of the environmental impact, I think that is key for new buildings and for the department not to have planned that in advance, I am embarrassed. Anyway, I, I worked in environmental education in my previous life, and so I understand how those things could work. So anyway, why don't we take- So anyway, why don't we take some ideas from other entities that are doing some of these things and plan in advance for some of the things that are needed long-term? So anyway, the people that have voted for you and voted you in are looking forward to some resolve of the situation. The Parks Department has somebody who is very hardworking, but she doesn't have the time to address this issue. And like I said, the plan was approved. Go back in your minutes and read it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward and address the issue that's before us? Please come down here and give us your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Up on the screen is Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanna, wanted to reiterate that I'm supportive of this motion. I think that what the message that we want to send to the administration is that this is a priority to the council. We've been talking about this for a couple of years. The plan was finalized with a lot of work from the senior task force and one of our former colleagues. And I think that it is time that we not just say, oh, we're gonna do the one million dollars and go explore, that we do have established a real plan to make this a reality. I know that for me, this is a big deal. And I would like to see it funded in the next budget. If we're already having these conversations, you guys will have, you know, the next few months to put a budget together for the next fiscal year. So let's figure out how we fund a complete senior center. I want to thank Carmen and all the seniors that continue to come out every time we are talking about this issue for staying on us because you guys do deserve to have a senior center. I've traveled up and down the state and it is sad that the city of Fresno does not have a dedicated senior center when other cities like Merced, Mendota, Huron, or these other communities do have a dedicated space. I think that we need to look about opportunities. There's gonna be another cycle of Prop 68 dollars. This falls under the realm of parks and rec for seniors. So if this is truly a priority for this council and the mayor takes us seriously about getting this done, I don't see why we will continue to make excuses of figuring out. Let's figure out the funding mechanism. We have, we're figuring it out for our, for the SPCA issue. We're figuring it out for fire stations and for police stations. I see our seniors as valuable as all these other resources and amenities that we are providing in our community. So I'm proud to support this today. I want us to seriously have a funding plan and that we are, that this is on top of our list to do over the next few months. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any opposition? Sorry, Assistant City Manager Shad.
More than happy to look at this as a priority for Prop 68 dollars. I believe we approached every council member in this chamber on Prop 68. And I don't recall hearing any council member other than the council president with Multi Gen Center bring that as a priority.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I'd just like to remind the council that when you came to us with those Prop 68 projects, you limited us to two projects per district because of limited staff capacity, which is understandable.
We asked you for any other ideas.
All right, folks, let's get to this vote. We have a motion in a second. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, passes six, seven zero. Thank you very much. Now we're gonna go to the workshop. Item three B. This is options improving services of this landscape lighting maintenance District One sponsored by Public Works.
Thank you, Council President, council members, colleagues. So back in July, the council conducted a hearing on the lighting landscape maintenance district, the LLMD, and asked staff to do some more research and come back just to talk about options of how we deal with these frozen rates. So we have a brief presentation and here with me is Assistant Director Andrew Benelli, who you're accustomed to seeing about CFD annexations, and Aaron Agary, our manager over the landscape division. So to recap just a little bit, we'll be brief on that and try to get to the options. We have 145 different subdivisions, tracts that are part of the LLMD, 14,870 individual properties. And actually, LLMD includes all seven council districts, varying amounts of tracts in each one. Generally, these are the neighborhoods developed in the 1980s, early to mid 90s. Proposition 218 came along and that, the voters decided that no longer could legislative bodies increase assessments or rates without a vote of the people, of the property owners, prior to. And for various reasons, the city of Fresno has not undertaken an increase for the LLMD other than one neighborhood during that time period. So the green on this map designate shows where the LLMD neighborhoods are. So back to conditions, we mentioned it's mostly single family, a little bit of multifamily. And it's currently serviced every 60 days, every two months, and that was by a private contract awarded by council. It was a low bid for that service, not by city forces. We have lots of missing plant material along the LLMD. You basically have trees, occasionally some plants left. The irrigation systems are outdated. Unlike everything that we've formed since then, there is no replacement funding being collected through the district. So when a plant dies, that comes out. When an irrigation line breaks, it becomes very, very difficult. And so if we don't increase the rates, at some point in the near future, we'll be looking on an individual neighborhood of having to reduce that frequency to every 90 to 120 days. Not a good cycle to be on. So again, the revenue, it's used for the landscape maintenance. We pay the water bills through that and a very small amount for administration of just placing that on the tax rolls. Things like pavement, lighting, concrete sidewalks, they're never included back in the LLMD, unlike the CFD annexations that you see most weeks on the council agenda. So and to give you a picture of the rates on this slide, again, I wanted to highlight the average assessment per year on the LLMD is $49 per home, about four bucks a month. There are some that are a little lower, higher, but by comparison, CFD, unlike 49 a month in the LLMD, our community facilities district number two, those average $146. And in the CFD 11 that everything comes into today, averages $235 per home. So very large difference in what people are actually paying for. We had discussion last time around this topic about LLMD versus CFD. The materials show the differences. The real key is not, there's not an inherent problem with being in a landscape lighting maintenance district structure. It's the lack of an escalator. It's the lack of an inflationary, anything indexed to inflation within that district. To that point, city of Clovis still uses the LMD structure today. They do not create CFDs or annex into CFDs. They still annex their new developments into their landscape maintenance district. So here are some photos just to illustrate what we've been talking about. Council had seen these last time. Very typical, if you want to know, it's an LLMD. Many of them have the wooden fences. Redwoods and pine trees were very popular at that time of development. And you'll see a lot of where irrigation, sprinkler heads, they've been capped. There used to be shrubs, used to be plants there and now are no more, missing trees. So those are some further pictures. Also juniper bushes are a good trademark of LMD landscapes as well. CFDs by comparison, we have in all portions of the city. South, you know, west Fresno, southeast, northwest, northeast. And this is just very typical photos of what the community facilities districts looks like today. Well-maintained landscaping, where there's turf, we mow those every week. Shrubs and beds are treated on a 30-day cycle. And they do include generally plant replacement, irrigation system replacement. So again, more photos and those are scattered again all over the city. The one on the lower portion of the screen, that's the southeast Fresno neighborhood. And we get kudos regularly from residents, people generally very pleased with the service. So again, we work closely with the city attorney's office. Been great help talking about what the process would be to adjust those. Last year, there was an effort, a successful effort in Council District Two, where one of the neighborhoods was adjusted and increased. Basically, this is a 50% of return ballots plus one, so not a majority of the overall neighborhood, but just a majority of return ballots. Who would be in favor? That would enable council to then make a decision about increasing that assessment. Prior to that, we would need to do a rate study by that neighborhood and then some level of public outreach. So possible approaches. Overall, our message is, staff is recommending to work with individual council district offices. There may be some tailoring of this approach by parts of the city. Option one is what we kind of highlighted last time, near Minnetonka West, north of Herndon. We had a 174-home neighborhood. Councilmember Brandau at the time opted to use $30,000 of infrastructure money as a demonstration project, working with the neighborhood to say, if you were to vote on an increase, this is the type of amenity we could support and maintain. If not, it's not going to last. It would, we could only maintain on a 16- to 90-day basis. Lots of meetings with the residents. There was a backyard meeting attended by both Aaron Agary and Andy Benelli. Good group of neighborhoods, neighbors kind of leading the charge and wanting something better. And that ultimately did result in a successful ballot. Here are photos of the before and after. Again, a very tired, dead landscape. There were sprinkler heads with just caps all over in the park strip. And then you can see on the right side of this slide what it looked like afterwards. Option two, rather than just individual neighborhoods, here's the what would Clovis do, what do they do approach? And it is possible to take large groups of neighborhoods and group them by zone and then have an up or down ballot for those zones. So in Clovis, they have three different zones. Interestingly enough, they always supported their increases until this last year, when north of Herndon in Clovis voted yes and the Clovis East High School area voted no. So city of Clovis is now, they've reduced services in the Clovis East area and up in the Buchanan area of the city, then they're still going with the monthly service. So that's one other dynamic with that. Option three, it is possible to do a citywide up or down ballot on the entire LLMD. Again, that's 14,697 lots. Challenges would be outreach. And again, there may not be a strong chance of passing that type of ballot. Again, it may take multiple cycles. There's also a significant cost just in conducting that special mail ballot election. And unfortunately, option four is just, again, the status quo. With that, wages rise, cost of water rises. Meanwhile, the assessment stays flat and ultimately, we go from 60 ultimately to 90, 120-day. Again, not a good declining cycle. There are a lot of options to how even a ballot could be structured. Do we want to increase the frequency to 30-day? Do we put an escalator on it? And do we include funds for tree and plant replacement? All of those affect what the rate is. So overall, staff recommendation would be to work with individual council district offices, perhaps bringing up this topic in neighborhood meetings. And where there is support and interest from the community, those are some great locations to start. If neighborhood tends to be very opposed to any increases in that assessment, that may not be a good use of dollars, city dollars spent on conducting that election. Next steps after, if it is increased or decreased, as we've discussed, if an increase is supported, then a lot of great things can start happening in terms of better service. Replacement of trees, increase the maintenance cycles, smart irrigation controllers. And if we include an escalator, as was done with this neighborhood in northwest Fresno, there's no need to ballot again. It's very similar to CFDs and it would be just indexed to inflation. If an increase is not supported, again, we're on a downhill path of service of needing a cap irrigation and basically just get it to a very, very simple landscape we can maintain with limited dollars. Trees, trees and then wood chips only. Any remaining shrubs would be removed. So with that, we have the team here and glad to entertain questions or discussion or possible direction. Thank you.
Very good. Appreciate it very much. Thanks to you and your team. They always do a great job. So this is a workshop. We're not gonna take it out to the public because it is a workshop. So we'll come back up here and first up is Member Chavez, followed by Member Arias.
Thank you, President. Scott, just a couple of questions. So in the spirit of the conversation we just had about whether we subsidize the police station or fire station or ongoing maintenance money for downtown, whatever that looks like, could you kind of give the council an overview of what a Melrose district would look like for the city of Fresno?
Absolutely. And just to clarify, Melrose, more citywide or specific neighborhood-based? So for specific neighborhoods, so two options. One would be to actually take that neighborhood, an attempt to form a Melrose district. That would involve a two-thirds majority vote of actually registered voters residing in the district. As long as you have more than 12 registered voters and it's an effort to form a community facilities Melrose district, then that does become a registered voter election rather than property owner election. Unlike if it's simply an increase in an existing LLMD, that becomes a property owner ballot. And the CFD, a new Melrose district could include a wide variety of services. It could include not only landscape maintenance, it could include better service for street maintenance, paving, or even capital improvements.
Public safety.
And Melrose could include public safety, yes.
Infrastructure. And this would be on an ongoing basis, essentially ensuring the complete maintenance of a neighborhood on, in perpetuity?
Yes.
Do we have any in California that you could call that we could point you as good models?
Well, we do have, each new neighborhood does come into a community facilities district that addresses really everything except public safety, includes park maintenance, streets, landscape lighting, concrete, sidewalks, everything's all included, but not public safety. Clovis does have some neighborhoods in the very far north area near Shepherd Avenue, where they did bring them into a Melrose district for public safety. And it was due to the long distance from other fire stations that they had in place.
Okay, thank you. Member Arias.
Thank you. Scott, can you turn to slide six, please?
Okay, my apologies, I don't have the slide numbering. That was, is that the possible approaches or conditions?
The current conditions. One more. There you go. So that's a reflection of the vast majority of my districts, in my council district. That's exactly the conditions that we see when we're walking precincts and walking neighborhoods, is landscape that has died years ago and that was never replaced. It's, if you go to the next slide, two more slides after that, that is the neighborhoods up north, where maintenance has continued to be kept up and where the greenery is clearly alive and well-maintained. And I do recognize that they have the escalating fees to be able to do that. But what I like to see, in terms of your recommendation, is I like to see a citywide election. Because if we're gonna try and argue that this is one Fresno, then we need to make sure that all Fresno has the same level of maintenance and investment and that we, as a city, make that very strong public argument for the need to have an escalator and a 30-day service period across all landscaping. service period across all landscaping and areas of this nature. So I would prefer your option three with the district-wide ballot initiative and pursue option B as in Boy, where the frequency of service would be 30 days and it would include an annual escalator so that all the areas can be maintained. I think that's better for everyone than to ask us to go into all the neighborhoods. If you look at that map on option three, just in my district alone, I'm talking about maybe half a dozen neighborhoods. And to ask me to ask every neighborhood if they want something different, if they want a different, you know, level of service, a different level of investment, it makes it very difficult because these subdivisions and tracks were built next to each other and they all consider themselves to be part of the same neighborhood, even though they were built by different developers and different track maps. So I like to see a citywide ballot initiative. It would require, of course, us to probably make some investments to make sure that we get a very clear message to all the property owners on the current conditions, as you did today, the proposed conditions and service levels. I do believe that people are willing to invest in their neighborhoods and they would be supportive if we do it the right way and make that very clear presentation to them on why we need to do this. So again, a citywide effort with option B for a 30-day service cycle and annual escalator so that we can maintain whatever investments we make in the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Member Carbasi.
Can you go up to that first slide? My colleague asked you to pull up, was it page, was it slide three or five, six? Okay. So Scott, that looks like northwest Fresno. It looks like off of Bullard and Dante, maybe the Fig Garden Loop area. I take serious offense to the comment that it's north versus south. That is an absolutely false narrative. I would love to take my colleague on a tour, he's not paying attention. I'd love to take my colleague on a tour of my neighborhoods because a lot of these exist in northwest Fresno. Last week, we voted on funding, grant funding for infrastructure almost exclusively in south Fresno. Today, we voted on an urban forestry bill so that the rest of our city, mostly in the south, can look like northwest Fresno. This city is committed to serving all of Fresno, and I'm so tired of this north versus south nonsense. Are there challenges in the south? Absolutely. But there are a lot of people committed to equity for the entire city and knocking us down constantly and trying to, on camera, this false narrative that, you know, it's the haves and have-nots. That's what tears a community apart. We need to work together so we can have a great neighborhood, but my neighborhood has this too, and that's just not true.
Next up is Member Brettafield.
Yeah, I guess I could kind of repeat the same thing Councilman Carbasi said. I look at this and I see northeast Fresno. Now, Scott, you're all over the city. You're in northeast Fresno. We worked on something along Cedar, replacing all of this, where I took large amounts of money out of infrastructure money to replace this kind of thing. Would you say that this is kind of the standard in northeast Fresno, like it is in most parts of the city?
Yes, Council, let me go back just to the citywide map. And again, those green, the green shape, other than, of course, the green color for council district three, but the green subdivisions on there show where those are. So just in terms of sheer numbers of tracks, where these subdivisions are, the greatest numbers of them in total are definitely in districts two and district six because that's where the growth was during late eighties, 1990s. But you do see a number west of 99 and some in southeast Fresno as well. But yes, they are very common, so, and it was really, you're getting kind of north of Perrin Avenue in, say, for example, in your district, before you start to get to a lot of CFD subdivisions, predominantly LLMD south of that.
Not predominantly community facilities district that have people paying more money and so they're maintained more frequently and look better. It's mostly the LLMDs.
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, again, the portrayal that the north has roads paved with gold and everything is landscaped lush is total bogus nonsense. The roads are not paved with gold. The roads are in need of repair, just as all the roads throughout the city are. We spent TCC money today. $70 million of TCC money is going to district three. I support it. All of us support it. It needs to happen. Nobody says anything about it. You know, I think the class warfare stuff that seems like every Thursday when we're here, I have to respond to an attack on people in the north have everything and people in the south don't. It's divisive and it's rhetoric that needs to stop. I continue to encourage the council member to stop with this kind of north-south rhetoric, but he obviously feels it plays well for him politically. But I'm going to continue to address it. Every time that stupidity comes out, I'm going to address it. So hopefully, the stupidity will stop, but I'm not sure if it will because he's a supporter of AOC and Bernie Sanders.
Next up is Member Soria. Let's try to stay on topic if we can, folks.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Scott, for the presentation. Obviously, if we look at the map, it is clear that there is a need to do something because if we do drive through a number of our neighborhoods, they are in need of some TLC. I think that, and I get the frustration with my colleagues from up north and feeling like they're being attacked, but I don't think it is, I don't think that it's wrong to point out that there's a distinction. When we look at that map, majority of the green areas are up north. So today, we're having a conversation and we're understanding how we can improve not just north Fresno, but I think the city as a whole. And if we do want to see improvements throughout the city, and I know that you've supported Councilmember Brettafield like today, the investments down south, I think that rather than just going neighborhood by neighborhood, that we have to have a hard conversation if we do want to do it citywide. That's kind of where I see we should be going, rather than picking and choosing what neighborhood to do it at or what neighborhood, you know, or going by district. I think looking at as a whole comprehensively, if that is a desire of this council to look, rather than look at just certain districts. So that's what I would suggest that this council does if we are serious about wanting to change the neighborhoods across the city, both north and south, then doing a citywide would probably be the best way to go. Thank you.
Assistant City Manager Shad, you have the floor.
I just want to clarify. If a property owner voted for this, they would be assessed a fee, is that correct?
That is correct.
Or a higher fee in the case of they're already paying something.
That's correct. And the ballot would need to be structured for a choice. Shall the assessment be increased to this certain amount, which would provide and then define what changes, what improved services would be associated with that higher special tax assessment? So, and these go on the property taxes paid each year.
Thanks.
All right. Screen is clear. This is a workshop. Thank you for your presentation and your team. Thank you guys for being here and enlightening us on the options and where we are today.
Council President, if I may just ask, I think the staff needs some direction or consensus on whether to pursue a by-area election system or a citywide election system. Do you have enough direction, Scott, to pursue the next steps?
Scott, before you have that answer, I think we need to have a lot more conversation, especially with each of the districts, because you and I have had this chat where there are different rate structures across the area. And I think we've got a good pulse on where that area, there have been neighborhoods that have actually voted to assess themselves and had not wanted to go that route. So before we land on a specific, for Councilmember Arias, I'd like to have a more deep conversation with staff on what that will look like for each council district.
Yes, I think we do have good direction. What staff did not hear today was an interest in status quo. There have been, over the years, some comments or suggestions, well, now's not a good time. Let's not touch it. Let's not modify it. There's definitely an interest in doing something and the staff, you know, we can work with our city manager's office and determine what kind of cost, what kind of budget, what kind of timeline would be needed to implement a good approach.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you guys did a lot of good work at our direction to come back with options. You did today. And if we need more time to have individual conversations, that's fine, but I do want this to come back for some closure because we all agree that the current conditions of these areas are not acceptable any part of town. So I just want to make sure that staff doesn't intend to come back for us to take more action.
No idea. Okay, the screen is clear. Thank you for the workshop. Each council member, of course, has access to you and your team to voice any and all concerns they have. So thank you very much. Next, we'll go to the 11 o'clock item. So bill for introduction and adoption, I'm sorry, it was introduced on November 7th, for adoption today, sponsored by Members Carbasi, Brettafield, and the mayor's office. Member Carbasi, if you'd like to kick it off?
I think we had a good discussion about this bill at the last meeting. And before I say anything, I know Councilmember Chavez had some legitimate concerns. Did you want to make an amendment of any kind?
I did. So as I said earlier, I didn't want the city attorney to be caught in a situation where he would make the sole decision or be forced to prosecute one of our fellow colleagues if we were suspected of violating this ordinance. So I'd like to make a friendly amendment that would read that if a city-elected official would be suspected of violating this, that we would have a closed session and give direction by way of council majority on the action that you would take, Doug. That's what I would like to see included in this, if you're amenable to that.
Have one moment, please.
The council could give that direction. Now, the direction would be in the form of, do you want an independent counsel or somebody in my office to prosecute? The council itself can't say, we are making the decision to prosecute. It has to be that independent prosecutorial discretion, but the council can give the direction to go pursue it.
Got it. Yeah, that was the goal.
I appreciate and accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, the other sponsors, again, Member Carbasi, then Member Brettafield, and the mayor's office. So Member Brettafield, followed by mayor's office, if you'd like to comment on this adoption moment.
You know, I support what is being proposed and I'm ready to move forward with it. I think we had our conversation last week and those others have some comments.
City manager, you're fine with the?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to discuss this item? I do have some cards, so therefore, there's a priority. So we'll start with Raquel, followed by Sam Frank, followed by Robert Rosati. So Raquel, the floor is yours. Give us your name, your address. You'll have three minutes. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you. My name is Raquel Bosani. My address is 1603 West Harvard Avenue. The proposed revisions omitting potential criminal liability of the media and for publication and providing whistleblower protections are better, but they're not good enough. And the proposed amendment today is, in my opinion, not good enough either. As written, the original proposals seem to be unconstitutional, so as stated, these are improvements, but the ordinance, even as revised, should be voted down. Administrative remedies, discipline of employees, censure of elected officials are sufficient. Even with whistleblower protections, this ordinance can too easily lead to abuse. This ordinance, as proposed, can be used to hide inconvenient facts, which the public should know by discussing them in closed session when they should be discussed in public. This ordinance, as proposed, could be used to intimidate city personnel to prevent them from acting ethically, morally, and in the interest of the public. Consider this scenario. A council member during a budget session notes that the city needs more money for police protection. A council member asks, how much has the city spent in settlements, judgments, and legal fees for excessive force suits against the police department while Jerry Dyer was police chief? The city attorney writes up a report and marks it confidential. The report shows that tens of millions of dollars were spent defending lawsuits, paying settlements, and paying judgments, and that there are many more lawsuits and many more millions of dollars potentially still owed. So instead of spending money on police services, we have been spending money, and a great deal of it, due to police misconduct and poor management under Chief Dyer's watch. If a council member or staff member discloses these facts, facts which the public has a right to know, this ordinance would allow that person to be criminally prosecuted. The public has a right to know how many times the city has been sued for excessive force by the police department while Jerry Dyer was chief of police. The public has a right to know how much money was spent on all those lawsuits. The public also has a right to know why there is not enough money to, excuse me, to provide more police officers in Fresno. One day, one of you on the council can and should demand a report on those issues. You are responsible for passing the budget for the city. You should know where the money goes. One day, one of you may ask the city attorney's office for an opinion on whether better training and supervision of city police officers would have prevented incident after incident of unarmed civilians. Most young men and boys were killed beaten by Fresno police officers without just cause. A report on that question should be public, not hidden away because a report on that question is central to the duties to the public. The proposed ordinance can easily be abused to prevent the public from knowing what it should know and properly evaluating the services of city officials, including council members. The ordinance should be voted down. If I have a few minutes.
You have about 15 seconds.
Oh, okay. I'll close out. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Next up is Sam Frank, followed by Robert Rosati.
Good morning. Hi, good morning. My name's Sam Frank. I'm president of the Fresno City Employees Association. I'm here to speak on this ordinance because I believe it needs to be amended. I think it has a fatal flaw. And while I do acknowledge that closed session has a purpose, especially for litigation, where divulging information could hurt the city and hurt the city's case, negotiations, where divulging information as a pretense to negotiations could hurt the city's position in negotiations at the table. There's other factors as well that, you know, preclude information given in closed session from being disseminated to the public. But if you look at, look at Dee's letter that she enclosed with your other information, one thing you gain from all that information that exchanged between her and Mark Scott is this. Something was brought into closed session. It was a report, a document, and it pertained to the provision of services and it pertained to the city's status at that point and whether or not the city was about to have to declare a fiscal emergency. Okay? And you have to understand that what was being proposed was that a major portion of the services that we provide to citizens, which is the collection of trash, was about to be privatized based on information given by the city manager, Mark Scott at the time. Now hindsight is 2020. We can look at all of Mark Scott's assertions and say, well, not all of them panned out. The employees who were privatized for solid waste on the commercial side did not last longer than a year. Most of them didn't last a year, and they certainly weren't getting the same benefits that Mark Scott was saying that they would get. You can also look at the rates. Mark Scott was talking about a 70% decrease in the rates. He was talking about the fact that the rates were over where they needed to be. The fact that we haven't raised rates in 10 years for solid waste says that we were collecting more than we needed to because every year, we know that you've got 2% and 2.5% inflation for all the services we provide, and yet, we've been able to keep rates at the same level for 10 years. Okay, so not everything being brought to council, and that's all of you, not everything being brought to you was, in hindsight, factually correct. That being said, Mark had released information that was positive to his position to the public. The Caffers, he even notes this. There are four different things that he said, yes, you know, I've put that all out there. I put that all out there. Yet here was this report by a legal firm that ran contrary to what he was asserting. He didn't put it out there. The question, the only question you should have is, did the public have a right to know all the information as it pertained to the provision of services at the time and whether or not there was a real need to privatize those services or not? Because of that leak, the public did get that information. Because Mark Scott was trying to use the fact that anything brought to you in closed session can be kept from the public and... session can be kept from the public, and in this case, with this ordinance, be illegal to disseminate to the public. This ordinance needs a provision that if any councilman believes that the public's right to know a piece of information, not something that you guys say, not something pertaining to negotiations, not something pertaining to a lawsuit, or anything else where the city's interests would be hurt, but just a piece of information like that report that the public's not getting and is being hidden by use of the mechanism of closed session, that that councilman can go to the city attorney and say, "City attorney, tell me why the public doesn't have a right to know. Tell me why this report can't be released."
Sam, you need to wrap it up here, no overtime.
So, what I'd like to see is an amendment that allows for a mechanism so that if the city council or a councilperson determines that they believe the public has a right to know, that there would have to be a determination made as to whether that right overrules the right to keep the information from the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Rosati, you're up. Thanks for being here. Give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Robert Rosati, I live at 756 East Serena. This ordinance, even as amended, and as amended, it's an improvement, should be voted down. Too early, there are adequate administrative remedies. You can discipline an employee, you can censure a member of the council, there's no need to add criminal penalties that will be used to intimidate and may be used for improper purposes. Here's an example. We have a former chief of police and a current candidate for mayor, who in a public interview with the Fresno Bee was asked about allegations that he was a child molester. In that interview, he admitted that he did things in his past that he's not proud of. He didn't deny he's a child molester. Now, this public knowledge, or he admitted publicly that he's been investigated twice as a police officer for allegations of having sex with minor girls. The question that all of you should have had was, do we have an issue with our internal affairs department? Did he admit to having sex with minor girls, and was he promoted nonetheless? Was he exonerated? Was it covered up, or did he deny having sex with minor girls and therefore was exonerated and subsequently promoted? One of you, in doing your duty, may ask, "Do we have a problem with internal affairs investigations and promotions in the police department?"
I'd like to keep you on topic.
I'm on topic, and when you do that, what happens when this investigation and this report is declared confidential? When his Fresno Bee interview took place, Chief Dyer publicly admitted, in effect, that he's a child molester. He was our chief of police. If somebody had said, "Maybe we should investigate whether it's appropriate for the city of Fresno to have a chief of police who has publicly admitted to be a child molester," would that have been buried by a closed-session hearing? These are issues that are relevant to the public administration of this city. This is how we supervise public employees, this is how we spend public money. If you allow these kinds of issues to be buried, then, or allow a future mayor, Dyer, to intimidate by threatening criminal prosecution if they come out in public, then you're seriously damaging the public's interest. Here's another example. When Jerry Dyer was chief of police, he was sued by two deputy chiefs for hostile work environment. The city paid $300,000 to settle the claim, and over $800,000 to its own lawyers, over a million dollars the city paid. Now, if he's a future mayor and one of you says, "Hey, maybe we should pass an ordinance requiring he take special training," and the city manager buries it, or the city attorney buries it, shouldn't that be a matter of public interest? Don't you have an obligation to protect city employees and city staff from improper behavior by city officials?
Your time is up.
You should vote this down.
All right. Any of us in the public wish to come forward? That's all the cards I have. All right, we'll close public comment on this, we'll bring it up here. Member Arias.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to have a couple of questions for the sponsors. At the last meeting, I asked the questions about whether the cost suggested in this proposal, i.e. the evidence to justify it, has been provided to the council. The proposal suggested that these kind of leaks have cost us millions of dollars in the past, and it would save us millions of dollars in the future. Has that information been provided to the council?
If I can answer that question, I didn't make that statement, neither did my co-sponsor. To me, it's not about the cost, it's about attorney-client privilege and our responsibility as elected officials to be accountable and honorable, and that's why I proposed that. So, that's kind of a moot question, it's a good smokescreen, but it doesn't take away the need to have this.
No, council member, this is my time, and for the record of this with the mayor...
Hold on, hold on. Member Arias, hold on. You have the floor, you asked a sponsor, he answered, so now let's stay on task, we need to wrap this up.
The statement was made by the mayor of Fresno.
You asked a question about the sponsor.
Yes.
And it's a good question, I told you that last week. So, I would ask, again, our city attorney, do you have any response in terms of the concern that he raises, which I think is a fair one, it's a fair one?
And just to be clear, city attorney, the mayor of Fresno, who's a co-sponsor of this proposal, made that statement, so I was waiting to hear from the mayor of Fresno or his staff to provide us the evidence that is included in this proposal. Has that evidence been provided?
Do you have anything, Jim, that can be relayed from what we had talked about a week or so ago?
No.
Okay, and so, he's not here.
That's fair.
And Doug, do you have anything that, because you gave an example last week, which I think is very relevant.
And we heard that example, but my question was specific to the sponsors, and legal counsel is not a sponsor of this item, so I just wanted to make sure for the record that people know that that information isn't provided. My question in terms of this proposal is, how does this proposal consider anonymous complaints? Will anonymous complaints be processed under this proposal? I know currently, the FPPC and the District Attorney's Public Integrity Unit does process anonymous complaints.
Yes, as we would any other violation of municipal code.
Okay, thank you. And then, my other question for the sponsors is, how does this differ from the role that the Public Integrity Unit and the District Attorney's Office plays now? Because my understanding of that Public Integrity Unit by the District Attorney Smithkamp is that they already have the authority, and they already enforce the Brown Act violations that occur across all jurisdictions within the county. Is there anything distinctively different from what you're proposing than what the district attorney already has authority to do?
I don't think, and city attorney, you can respond if I'm incorrect, they're not mutually exclusive from one another. Obviously, the Public Integrity's Unit has a wide range of responsibilities and governmental agencies to be responsible for. We are obviously focused here in this ordinance on what goes on in closed session here. But I don't see them as mutually exclusive, and the fact that there is a Public Integrity Unit does not mean we shouldn't be addressing what we're addressing in this ordinance. That's the way I feel about it.
So, is it fair to say that if this ordinance passes or fails, the district attorney would still have the authority to pursue Brown Act violations?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And then, a couple of other references. I would ask the sponsors to remove their references to the millions of dollars being saved, or that is costed, since there's no evidence provided, just as a friendly suggestion. And then, I would also ask that there be an amendment to include violations by the police chief when it comes to pending litigation. That's been a topic for us numerous times this year. As you know, our city policy is that nobody comments on pending litigation, especially when those issues are discussed in closed session. I want to be clear that nobody, including the police chief of Fresno, is going to be above the law, and that violations of communicating publicly about pending litigation is covered by this ordinance.
Yeah, I think you just made it on ABC, so congratulations. I want to make a comment that I would love to remove, I would love to say, "We're not going to include the provision of..." I didn't write it, the mayor wrote it, my co-sponsor didn't write it, and I believe there's an administrative order already in place. I can't dictate because we're a council, we're a democracy. City manager, is there an administrative order in place in regards to what he's talking about, about the police chief?
Yes, there is, and if you're making changes in regards to what the police chief can say publicly, I would like for him to be here before we... I would request that he be there, because we did have a robust discussion about this and why there may be needs for him to respond to the public.
That's completely fair enough, and I would agree that the police chief should be present if we're going to be discussing limitations to anyone's authority, including him, because this ordinance does cover all employees, including the police chief, so I think those individuals should be present if we're going to be discussing these things. It is fair for us to get their responses. You know, I've read this ordinance, and I've spoken to my colleagues about this in the last meeting. For me, the ordinance duplicates what the District Attorney Smithkamp already has authority to do, which she already is investing significant resources in engaging in, and this suggests to me that she's not doing that competently, because it requires the city to duplicate her efforts. It also sends a chilling effect to employees, us criminalizing this kind of behavior when we already have rules in place. Any employee can be disciplined, terminated if they violate their standard procedures, including sharing stuff in closed session. Any council member can be censored if it is documented that violations occurred. It leaves me with a feeling that you heard today, and that I've heard since we discussed this, that this poorly justified and written proposal simply should be renamed the Dyer Protection Act, because it seems that the timing, in the middle of a mayoral campaign, is meant to silence current and former employees in the interest of political campaigns, and we are intentionally going to politicize investigations on ourselves. You know, I respect Council Member Brettafield, I think it's clear when we agree and disagree, but my agreement with him on politics should not put me in a position to be one of four council members that can direct our employee to investigate him, based on an anonymous complaint. I think we're setting ourselves up to be in a cycle of folks submitting erroneous complaints anonymously, or from the public, or involved with political campaigns from our opponents. Our staff will be sucked into investigations, and we will have to essentially be judge and jury to determine whether our colleagues are worthy of being investigated, and as you know, it's never, the headline is always, "Somebody's being investigated." It's never, "They were cleared." And all we're doing is giving everybody in the public, including our opponents, the opportunity to suck us into an ongoing and consistent cycle of investigations that call to question the integrity of this body, the integrity of our employees, and sends a very chilling message to employees that they should not feel free to come forward with information either to us or to the press with concerns that they may have. So, with that, I cannot support this item. Again, the evidence isn't there to suggest this justification, and I believe it's redundant to what the district attorney already does, and it's still, in my view, poorly written and poorly thought through.
Member Brettafield, you have the floor.
Wow, I can't believe some of the things that I'm hearing. The Dyer Protection Act. This, let me be straight with the public about what this has been. This is about stopping council members from their own self-interest leaking information to media outlets that hurt the city, that don't live up to their responsibilities and sworn duties as a council member, and for their own self-interest, leak information to other attorneys representing people against the city of Fresno and the media, because they want to pander to the media. This is not about protecting Dyer or anybody else, that's absurd. All of the information that the person came up and had said they would have liked, excessive lawsuits that have been filed, what's been paid out, all of that information's available, that's not hidden, that's the public money that gets paid out. It's all available, all it has to do is be requested, that's not confidential, it's there. City attorney, the woman who came up and all the information she requested, is she able to access all of that information?
Settlement agreements are public information, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, so any settlement agreement, any payout for a firing that took place by a police officer and there was a settlement, that's all open to the public, right? I mean, they get that information if it's requested, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, all of that information is available. Mr. Rosati, somebody I greatly respect, worked with in the past with the Woodward Park Homeowners Association, fantastic attorney, you read information that's out in the public on Chief Dyer. That's not hidden, you have it, so I'm not sure what we're talking about. We all know, sitting up here, this is not about Jerry Dyer. All of a sudden, this has become about Jerry Dyer. This has nothing to do with Jerry Dyer, I can assure the public, this is about making sure council members meet their responsibilities, and don't contact an attorney and say, "The city's prepared to settle for half a million dollars, just want you to know," because they're buddies. That goes on, that has happened, and we need to make sure that kind of stuff doesn't happen, because we're hurting the people who do that, or hurting the taxpayers that they supposedly represent and wanted to represent. The Ace Smithkamp, her name has come up, she handles her duties quite proficiently, is well-regarded, well-respected throughout the county. This has nothing to do with her not meeting her responsibilities, as was suggested. She's highly proficient, highly qualified, and does a phenomenal job. Our ordinance is not mutually exclusive from what she does in terms of the Public Integrity Unit. I want that unit to do its job, but I also want to make sure that we don't have council members, which we have, hurting the city of Fresno by leaking information in critical cases that are going on in closed session. That's what this is about. That's what it's about for me, that's what it's about for Council Member Carbasi and the mayor, has nothing to do with a police chief or a former police chief. So this has become politicized, much to my surprise, I don't know why I'm surprised, but I am surprised, and that's what this is about. And unfortunately, we do have council members that don't respect their oath to uphold the Constitution and to make sure that they meet their fiduciary responsibilities and their ethical obligations to their constituents they want to represent, and that's what this is unfortunately has to be about. There are whistleblower protections in this, anybody who has information of any undue behavior should report it, I encourage it, and not only here, but to District Attorney Smithkamp, if there is any kinds of criminal behavior, it should always be reported, this has nothing to do with that, doesn't prevent that. So this is very clear, if one reads the ordinance, what this is about. Last week, it was about attacking the media, and we want to punish the media and First Amendment rights. That's not the case, I'm glad we didn't hear that today. As I said last week, we respect, and I certainly do, the right of the public and the right of the media to serve as a watchdog for all levels of government. They want to pursue information, I understand that, not a problem. But we, here, in closed-session items, litigation that we're facing, contract negotiations ought to be more respectful of our roles and responsibilities, that doesn't happen too often, and that's what this is about.
Members?
Do you already make a motion to approve, you've got a second?
Didn't get a chance to make it yet, so I move to approve.
Make a motion, I'll second.
We have a motion by Member Carbasi, seconded by Member Brettafield. Next up on my screen is Member Sparza.
Yes, I'll keep my comments short. I think this legislation is way too sticky, I think it has too many pitfalls for transparency, and I do believe that our current laws and procedures are sufficient for addressing the issues that have been discussed here today, so I won't be supporting this.
Thank you very much. You live true to your word. Thank you. Member Carbasi.
So I know things kind of got away from us, it got a little emotional. I want to thank the public for their comments. We relied on public comment to improve this bill, and we've done that. I just want to state that, you know, it's a good point, we already have procedures in place, but I did ask at the last council meeting, I asked our city attorney, just briefly, have there been instances where closed-session content was leaked to the media or out there, anybody? And the answer was, yes, there have been leaks. So there obviously is a need. Our administrative penalties don't work, we've had it for a long time, they just don't work. So, what we're really trying to do, and I think Council Member Brettafield said it best, and some members of the public who contacted us said it best, that, you know, we need more accountability. Now, I want to make it very clear, because there was a comment made, our city employees, we have a lot of appreciation and respect for your role, Sam, as FCEA, I have a lot of respect for what you do, I wish we could have talked about it rather than the last minute today. There are protections for our city employees. If you're a city employee and the city's doing something illegally, that's why we compromise and put whistleblower protections. You can go to law enforcement, it's your right, and no one can stop you. You don't even have to go to the city attorney, you just go directly to law enforcement if the city's doing something illegally. And I want you to know that we have that protection in there so that no one is ever intimidated or afraid to do what's right. At the... At the same time, under our laws, we are required to discuss certain things behind closed doors. We are elected by the residents of our districts to serve them and make tough decisions. When it comes to litigation, or labor negotiations, or some of the things that were mentioned, we have a responsibility and we should respect that process. You can't respect that process when somebody decides because of politics to leak that information. And we're just trying to fix that problem. I think that this is a very measured ordinance. It's, we're not the only city to do this, but our ordinance is the most lenient of the other two cities in California that have actually offered it. They don't have whistleblower protection, and we do. Last, I just want to add that, you know, we are always open as a government, but we want to make sure that we can do our jobs. And there were a lot of comments made about elections, really inappropriate comments made about our DA that I think are really unfortunate. And that kind of just shows the attitude towards law enforcement. And we are bound by our Constitution, we are bound by our oath, and we shouldn't be disrespecting those institutions and then say, "Well, we don't want to uphold their laws." We are bound to protect that. If you're a resident and, you know, you go to your attorney, you talk to your attorney about something, you want to make sure someone's going to protect that right. And that's what we're trying to do for the council, protect that right. But again, a lot of things are available to the public. Any decision we made has to be disclosed to the public, and it will be. So I'm prepared to move forward.
Thank you, Member Soria. It's your opportunity.
Thank you, Council President. I want to keep this short. I will try to keep my promise, but we'll see. So I appreciate the debate that has been happening over the last couple of weeks regarding this ordinance. I appreciate the amendments. I appreciate folks coming from the community to express their concerns. In reality, what I see, I see this ordinance coming at the heels of information that was released, letters that were actually in the public domain or could be released because they weren't closed session, but emails that were bound by attorney-client privilege. This is what this is coming. I don't think it's the Dyer Protection Act or whatever it's being called. I think that it's come at the heels of that, of an article that was written by the Fresno Bee on October 18. I think that that's what this is about. And if, and if we are really trying to address the issue of information being leaked that is attorney-client privilege, then why doesn't it include everything? That's, that's when I'm really questioning, are we really being genuine about the issue that we're trying to resolve? We asked the question about, what is the issue? The issue is the leak, the leak supposedly being, happening from this body. However, we can only cite to one occasion in the last five years, and if we know that this city was chartered 163 years ago and this body is elected to solve problems, I don't see that there's a true problem that we're trying to resolve. I think that if we were being genuine about trying to resolve things being leaked, this bill would be much more comprehensive and try to attack the fact that there was an attorney-client privilege communication that was leaked that then was given to the Fresno Bee. And that's what this bill does not do. I also think, as was stated by not only my colleagues, but by someone from the public, that there is adequate administrative remedies. I actually believe that Mrs. Smithkamp is doing a good job in terms of, and I trust in her and have confidence in that, she's, she would enforce any type of Brown Act violation that would happen from this body. So if we were really trying to fix a problem that exists, because that's what they're saying, that there's a problem that exists, there would actually be true evidence. And I don't see enough evidence that warrants us to have to deal with this ordinance. There is already appropriate remedies to this issue if it does arise. So I feel, for those reasons, I can't support the amended version of this ordinance. I don't think it goes far enough, if that's what it's trying to do. I don't think that we are being genuine. And at the end of the day, I think that just because there was one issue, you don't go out and try to, you know, change everything when there's already a system in place that apparently has worked. Otherwise, we would have had 100 more incidents to that effect. So because of those reasons, I will not be able to support the ordinance as amended. But I do appreciate the fact that you guys went out and addressed the First Amendment issues, which I think for me were significant initially. Thank you.
Okay, folks, the screen is clear, so it's the Council President's opportunity. And I am a practicing attorney. I have closed sessions with every single client of mine. It's called the attorney-client privilege. And if I violate that privilege, I will be, it can be suspended. It's a very, very sacred thing that you have as an attorney with the people you represent. To me, a closed session is at the same level as the attorney-client confidentiality privilege. If it wasn't, why would we call it closed session? Why would we have to do the things we do in a closed session? Because it's mandated at certain levels of government by statute and by ordinance. So to me, the simple fact is, a closed session is closed session. Let's honor that. We have to. That's our obligation, responsibility as elected officials. Unfortunately, in my seven years on the council, plus one in '08-'09, I've seen violations in the past. And it's not a matter of whether it costs a dollar or a million dollars. It's not a matter of whether it can be prosecuted by the FPPC, the Attorney General, our city attorney, the deputy DA that's in charge of the office with Lisa Sandegard-Smithkamp, who I respect greatly. It's not, those are not the issues. That's not whether or not it's chilling. That's not the issue. It's really, really simple. We have to be responsible for our own actions. That's why we're up here. That's why we're elected. Since we are unable to do this, we have to create punishment for violations, consequences. So this ordinance is one step, in my opinion, in the right direction to ensure we accept our roles and responsibilities as your elected officials. So since we're unable to do that, we have to enforce or vote on an item like this. We've been all over the world with the ideas and the exchanges, but it really boils down to just follow the rule. Follow the rules. With that, we have a much better society, much better system, and a much more orderly operation of government. So with that, I'm going to support this item. We have a motion and a second. We'll do electronic voting. Those in favor, yes. Opposed, is it no? Members Carbasie, sorry, Member Soria, Arias, voting no, as well as Member Sparza. With that, we're into the lunch hour. We'll come back at 1:30. Sorry?
Can you come back a little later?
That's fine. I guess we have a hungry crowd. We'll be back at 2 PM at the request of my colleagues over my objection.
I'm hungry.
Alright ladies and gentlemen, we think we're ready to get back on track here. We've got just a few items and then we'll be able to wrap up today's agenda. It shouldn't take any more than 12 or 13 hours. With that, we can go to item 4A, Actions Pertaining to the South Industrial Priority Area. This item is sponsored by Vice President Arias, Councilmember Chavez, and the Mayor's Office. So whoever wishes to kick it off, let's do it.
Thank you Council President Capriolio for your willingness to hear this item first. If you don't mind, I'd like to allow public comment on this item first. I know there's people who are worried about the parking tickets and have to get home. Can we do public?
Well, I don't think the presentation will take more than a minute or two.
Okay, easy enough. So this afternoon, thanks for everybody for coming. We are introducing this revised item that the council members should have. It is a resolution that spells out the South Central Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report and the path forward. In my view, for too long, we put the interest of industry ahead of residents. And this plan ensures that we treat both equally as we consider future development in the central-south part of the city. A few months ago, I personally apologize to residents from south-central Fresno as a result of a legal settlement that cost the city $150,000 related to the Cadillac project where the city fast-tracked developments without considering the impact to neighbors in that area. Since then, Councilmember Chavez, Mayor Lebran, through Tim Orman's work, and community groups like Leadership Council and BHC have been working with the Attorney General and our legal counsel to work out a compromise that would ensure that both residents in those existing neighborhoods and future industrial development are brought together in a balanced approach that allows for the growth of future jobs in approximately 6,000 acres, as well as ensures that the quality of life of residents who've been there first continues to be taken into account. This proactive action today seeks to ensure that there is a formal community engagement plan of existing residents that live in that area and around that area that will be taken into consideration through the environmental impact report that we are currently undertaking, and that that will then feed the development of a South-Central-Specific Plan that will lay out exactly the mitigations that we need to take into account as we allow for the development of approximately 6,000 acres for industrial development in South Fresno. So with the resolution, just to give you a quick update on it, it updates the name of the plan to the South-Central-Specific Plan. It also maintains the contract with the consultant for the formal community engagement. It directs a separate process to analyze the annexation possibility for the communities of Kalua and Malaga, and it ensures that the community feedback is included in the environmental analysis, and any mitigations identified are included in the specific plan that will result from this work. We want to extend a great thank you to everyone who's been working on this. It's been months in the making. Emails have been going back and forth in the middle of the night, in the early morning, to try and get a language that finally accomplishes the goal. I would like to make a motion to approve the revised resolution with one amendment requested by the City Manager, and that amendment is to Section 6 of Page 4, and it will now read, "Council authorizes the City Manager to expend $250,000 in addition to the original amount authorized for this contract and/or hire additional consultants to fulfill the scope of the work outlined in this resolution." With that, I'll turn it over to the Council President or to Councilmember Chavez for comments.
Next up on the screen is the co-sponsor, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President. I want to publicly thank all the organizations that helped bring us to this day. I know it wasn't easy, a lot of back-and-forth conversation that went forward. I want to publicly thank the EDC for the work that they did, Leanne Will, the Attorney General's Office, the gentleman that was assigned to the initiative, Leadership for Justice, Ashley Warner, the Mayor and his team, the administration, for working with us on this. Oftentimes, you know, we work in silos, and I think this was an example of what can happen when we actually come together and actually build collaborations that can benefit the community. And like I said, this was, God, I want to say about, what, two, three months that my colleague and I and the Mayor and the stakeholders got together and brought in all the folks together, and I think we ended up with a plan that can work for the community, where it respects the rights that those residents had there. And Councilmember Arias is correct to say that they were there long before industry was there, and so we have to be respectful of that. I'm the council member that represents the area that's adjacent to Malaga and Kalua. I've had numerous conversations with them, and I've kept the community leaders and the folks in that area up to date, and they're eager to engage in the conversation. And so I'm looking forward to having this initiative passed today, and I urge a yea vote for my colleagues. Thank you.
City Manager, do you have any comments or additions?
No, I just appreciate the opportunity to work with council members on this. And then, Councilmember Arias, thank you for making that addition for us. I appreciate that authority.
Alright, that will conclude our staff presentation. That takes us to public comment. I have some cards here. I will start with Reverend Simon, followed by Arti, and then Elodia Perez. So please give us your name, your address. You'll have three minutes to address the council. And thanks to everyone for being here. Appreciate it.
Reverend Simon Biasel, 2106 North Ferris Avenue, District 1. Groups in the past have been critical of the city's and the Mayor's Office effort to engage with the community on significant decisions. And while we have been critical in the past, and I'm sure we will probably be critical in the future, I want to take this moment to recognize a positive step in really making an effort to listen to community members and putting them first, and also recognize the Mayor's Office and council members working together. It's a good example of leadership. So it looks like a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Arti, followed by Elidio Perez. After that will be Adela Moreno. Good morning or afternoon, sir. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Thank you, council members. So, I love what I just heard. I appreciate you all being open-minded and to listening to the community, and you've demonstrated that over the course of the last few months. I also want to thank Leadership Council and BHC for their continued work. This is a great way of how everyone can work together and get something accomplished with a unified mind and vision to support the community. On behalf of the DRIVE Initiative Executive Committee, I'm submitting some letters that are signed from some of the organizations within DRIVE, supporting what you all are demonstrating right now, the fact that the Mayor's Office, the Council, some of our organizations out in the community, the residents who are primary to these conversations, collectively can move forward with some healthy civic engagement. So I'm just going to submit these letters to you now, and I just want to say, this is a great way to demonstrate how economic development, community engagement, environmental justice, all of these can be swirled together and accomplished at the same time. So I appreciate you all and look forward to the DRIVE Initiative, working with the Council, with the Mayor's Office, and all of the organizations that we all have the same vision to see a healthier Fresno.
Arti, could you put your name and address on the record so we can?
Yes, Arti Padilla, 1719 L Street, 93721.
Thank you very much. Next is Elodia, if I mispronounced the name, I apologize, Perez, followed by Adela Moreno, followed by Ivanka Saunders. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So I am not Elodia Perez, but she had to leave unfortunately. However, we do have her in comments which I will be reading. They're in Spanish, but I'll be translating them as well. So, my, sorry, I just realized you're translating in English. So my name is Elodia Perez.
I need her name and address for the record.
Yeah, yeah. So, oh, no, no, she's not here. She's Adela. I will be translating for her after the fact.
So who is the speaking person today?
She had to leave early because she had to take off, so I am reading her comments that she wrote right here.
Could you put her name on the record?
Yes, her name and her address is here. So yeah, that's where I was going with this. Yeah. So, "My name is Elodia Perez. I live at 102 South Sierra Vista. I've been following this process now for a while, and we need more schools in South Fresno. As I have a child who has special needs, and I have to send him very far away just so he can go study. We also need more parks for our kids. We don't just need industries. We also, we are tax-paying residents that we pay from every single dollar that whenever we purchase anything. And we don't receive the same, we don't receive the same support in our community." And that was Elodia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Adela Moreno, y soy del Distrito 5.
Good afternoon, my name is Adela Moreno, and I'm from District 5.
Yo he seguido los comentarios que han estado haciendo en la Mosqueta, y yo dije que ellos querían hacer apartamentos en quinceño, y quinceño, tiendas abajo y apartamentos arriba.
And I've been following some of the meetings that they've been having at Mosqueta Center, where they wanted to encourage some development, where they would have apartments up top and stores at the bottom.
Y yo les di un comentario que por qué no iban a hacer sobre el área de del sur central, donde está por la cherry, que por qué no hacían ahí casas, y dijeron que no querían que se perdieran los campos agrícolas.
And I made a comment that, why isn't this also done in South Fresno, where, you know, it's also needed at a meeting around a long cherry? And their response was, because, you know, we need to preserve our agricultural land.
Y ahora me doy cuenta que este quieren hacer este industrias pesadas.
And now I see that, you know, there's just a lot of encouragement for heavy industrial.
Y entonces, por qué no ponen ahí, en vez de poner industrias pesadas que nos afectan mucho a la comunidad, por qué no ponen unas universidades, escuelas, hospitales, tiendas grandes?
And so, instead of just putting, you know, a lot of industrial facilities here, you know, that continue to affect our community, we should also put universities, schools, hospitals, big-box stores.
Esa área ni siquiera tiene semáforos, ni calles pavimentadas, ni agua limpia.
That area doesn't even have streetlights, nor paved sidewalks, or even, oh, or even clean drinking water.
Entonces, cómo quieren hacer industrias pesadas, pero no quieren, quieren ellos implementar más trabajos, y ahí ofreciendo todas esas cosas es una manera de ofrecer trabajos que le va a beneficiar a nuestra comunidad.
And so, you want to build all of this here, but you're not offering them, you know, the basic amenities that would help create better quality jobs.
¿Y qué más dijo de más trabajos buenos? Perdón, I'm sorry, I did not capture how well she said that. Yo lo que quiero es de que, en vez de que haya industrias pesadas, haya ese cambio, porque esa comunidad ocupa, no pueden construir industrias pesadas que construyan casas. Ahí es otra forma de poder, este, hacer trabajos para la comunidad, que haya trabajos, oficinas donde ya no haya más contaminación. Todo eso les afecta a los niños con el asma.
You know, what I would like to see is, you know, more different types of development. Like, it's not just, it's not industries that we need there. We need a variety of things. We need housing and offices, these type of opportunities that will create good, long-lasting jobs in the community. And, you know, the industries continue to affect the kids in the community who have asthma.
Y también he pensado en las personas que son mayores, todas esas personas. Solamente en esa área viven las personas que trabajan en los campos, porque puede uno pagar, este, menos renta, la renta no es tan cara, pero al mismo tiempo les está afectando porque, este, todos los químicos de esa, de ese lugar que son files donde les afecta a las personas que están ahí, y seguido los niños se enferman. Y en esa área está una escuela, en la esquina de Cherry y Central, me parece que está una escuela donde se hizo la última junta, entonces ahí no hay ni semáforos.
And, you know, we're also thinking about the older population there. A lot of people who are field workers and are affected, are affected by the contamination. You know, there's less, even though the rent is less there, but at the same time, the communities are being affected because of all the pollution and all the pesticides that are being sprayed in the area. And the kids are also affected by it because you have a school along Cherry and Central Avenue, where you don't even have a streetlight. That doesn't make it safe.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your interpretation.
I did my best.
Ivanka, and Ivanka will be followed by Sandra Vasquez, and then Jim Grant, and finally Kimberly McCoy.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ivanka Saunders. My address is 1411 East Drummond Avenue, 93706, and I'm a constituent of District 3. I am in favor of the resolution to include a community engagement plan within the South-Central-Specific Plan. We, as a community, deserve the right to be engaged in the process of this planning, just as residents have had the opportunity to do in every other specific plan within the city. Knowing that the city of Fresno needs to continue to decrease its actions of inequities between the north and south sides of Fresno, approving a plan to give the same treatment of true engagement to the South Fresno residents as in the north residents, will be another step in a positive direction for this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandra, are you here? Come on up, and followed by Jim, and then Kimberly.
Hi, my name is Sandra Vasquez. I am speaking on behalf of Leadership Council, and would like to thank everyone for getting together and allowing us to come to the table and work on a solution, for adopting a true specific plan. I would like to also say that based on what has been heard from community residents, including youth, they really feel the need to be part of this plan, and are very thankful as well for allowing them to give their comments on a day like today. Some of what has been heard from the community is concerns on more pollution in their community. These residents live with fear of knowing that any day more industries could appear next door to where they live, and how problems are being developed by these residents, and unsafe, and creating an unsafe neighborhood that includes more heavy trucks coming through these neighborhoods. We, along with community residents, ask you to please listen to the communities that could be affected by involving them into the process and developing this plan, because at the end, it's them who live in these communities, in these conditions for the next years. It is not easy for residents to move out of their community, and we have to understand how needed affordable housing is in Fresno. So, thank you again for coming to a process that allows residents to say what they would like in their community, and for the future of their community, and advances in economic development in a way that reflects our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim, please come up, give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes, followed by Kimberly, and then we'll open it up generally to the public.
Thank you very much. My name is Jim Grant. I live at 4098 West Harvard Avenue, 93722, District 3. On behalf of the Diocese of Fresno, I'd like to thank you for what it looks like we're moving to do here, and then I'd like to just share two thoughts from Pope Francis that I think are very relevant at this moment. In his encyclical on the environment, he says, "Interventions which affect the urban or rural landscapes should take into account how various elements combine to form a whole which is perceived by its inhabitants as a coherent and meaningful framework for their lives. Others will then no longer be seen as strangers, but as part of a 'we' which all of us are working to create. For this same reason, in both urban and rural settings, it's helpful to set aside some places which can be preserved and protected from constant changes brought by human interventions. Given the interrelationship between living space and human behavior, those who design buildings and neighborhoods, public spaces and cities ought to draw on the various disciplines which help us to understand people's thought processes, symbolic language, and ways of acting. It's not enough to seek the beauty of design. More precious still is the service we offer to another kind of beauty, people's quality of life, their adaptation to the environment, encounter, and mutual assistance. Here too, we see how important it is that urban planning always take into consideration the views of those who will live in those areas." So it seems that we want to thank you for this commitment to engage the broadest-based participation and the most specific effort to reach out to all of those who will be impacted not only in this one project, but in everything that the city does. It's so easy to come up with a plan that is made by people who really are not considering the very people it will most impact. So for your effort right now, which seems to be to form this coalition of people who will be engaged by being advised with plenty of time and good moments to meet, to give input on what their community will look like, there's been times when this hasn't happened, so we want to hope that right now, the commitment by the Council is to actually move in a direction of collegiality and listening to the community. It's your gift to serve us. We thank you for what you're committing to do, and encourage you to keep doing it all the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Kimberly, welcome. If you give us your name and address, you have three minutes.
My name is Kimberly McCoy, and I am the Project Director for Fresno Building Healthy Community. Address is 3138 West Santa Ana, 93722, in District 1. I would like to thank you for including an authentic community engagement portion to the South Industrial Planning Plan. This is a positive step in the right direction, and it can also help change how we do planning for our city. As a community organizer who talks to thousands of residents at a time and runs civic engagement programs, we need to make sure that we are capturing their voices and capturing their concerns about their neighborhood. I am glad that you guys talk to residents that are living within the planning I am glad that you guys talk to residents that are living within the planning area, but we seem to forget the people who live around the planning area. So I hope with this, that's what we're going to capture because they're going to be affected by any decision that we make or that you guys make when we do planning for our city. So in the future, when we're doing other plans, like how we did with the Southwest Plan and the Southeast Plan, that we need to make sure that we talk to all residents, not just residents that are included in the planning area, but the residents that are around the surrounding areas because they're going to be affected by your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the cards I have. Now we can open it up to anyone in the building or the room that wishes to address this issue. Please come forward, give us your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Council President. Will Oliver, Director of Business Services with the Fresno County Economic Development Corporation, 906 N Street, Fresno, California 93721. I wanted to come here and speak today both as a staff person and a member of the Sites and Spaces Committee through the DRIVE Initiative to say that we appreciate the efforts of Mayor Brand, Vice President Arias, Councilmember Chavez, and community partners to come to the table to identify workable solutions. At the EDC, we are committed to being an active partner throughout this process, including through community engagement such as events that we held last month at Orange Elementary School that we want to continue to build upon, as well as involving our private sector partners to participate too, between residents, local organizations and industry. No stakeholders mutually exclusive. And so we hope we can continue to strive for meaningful outcomes and establish some direction in a timely manner so we can continue to support new investment and that new job generation while also lifting our residents up too. So, thanks again.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, please, a name, address, and you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Daniel O'Connell, 3260 East Kircoff. I'm Executive Director of the Central Valley Partnership. It does my heart good to come down here and to see the council so responsive to the requests of the community groups and advocates. The Community Engagement Plan, thank you for all the hard work that has gone into accommodating these folks. In particular, Kalwa and Malaga, to take care of the services that need to be done to those areas that should have been incorporated is really heartfelt. I'd want to start with a rhetorical question of what does equitable economic development look like? And in particular, for those projects that receive a public subsidy, tax breaks, financial assistance from the city. As we move forward into a kind of a new era where we're actually having the community be involved, what does community benefit agreements and workforce agreements look like in that context? The role of labor unions to ensure that we have apprenticeship programs and local hire provisions that are actually enforced will be critical to that. So it's a new era. I'm hopeful the council is being so responsive to the community and its multi-stakeholder group engagement. So it's looking really well. A little small piece is the farmland provision that was muddied earlier. And in that revision of the farmland is more flexibility to do innovative farmland conservation provisions. So the EIR will be very interesting and the city has an opportunity to do some work on the conservation side as well. And I'll just wait for the EIR to see how that turns out. Thank you very much for listening to the community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward, name, address, and you'll have three minutes. You can pull that right down, the whole thing. There you go.
There we go. Hi, Ashley Warner with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. So I wanted to start by saying thank you to the many, many people who have put a lot of time into this and have had a lot of conversations to move this forward and get to where we are today. You know, in particular, I want to thank Councilmember Chavez, Councilmember Arias, the mayor, Tim Orman, Jennifer Clark, the city attorney's office, also our partners Fresno Business Council, the EDC, CVCF, members from DRIVE who came out today, and of course, first and foremost, community residents who have been at the forefront of advocacy all along, taking time out of their days after work, away from their families to advocate for inclusive and fair and just long-term processes that will promote prosperity in our city. So thank you. And I want to say that Leadership Council supports the final resolution that's before you today. It's taken a lot of communication and compromise, and I think where we've gotten to is a really good place. So we encourage you to move forward with that resolution and adopt it. You know, I will take a moment to say that we think, you know, a specific plan process here with the formal community engagement process is really essential to allow residents, for the first time ever, these are residents in unincorporated communities who haven't been part of the city's previous processes, to have a seat at the table for these really critical decisions for the futures of their communities. What types of land uses go in front of their homes, their schools, their religious institutions, and the other places that are essential for residents' everyday lives. Also, just want to point out, for those of you who haven't really explored the area, I encourage you to do so. It is partly a rural agricultural area right now, but it also has a number of distinct communities that have been there for generations, residents who have lived in their same home that has been passed down through their family, generation after generation. A few of those include Daleville, Malaga Avenue, Britton Avenue. Kalwa is just outside of the borders of this plan. There are Sikh temples, an incredibly beautiful Buddhist temple on Orange Avenue, which I encourage you to look at, a church, and many other key institutions and sensitive uses that stand to be benefited from a real meaningful community engagement process going forward. And I also want to say, I know I don't have too much more time, but I think this process would really mark a landmark shift in an opportunity for Fresno regarding how we talk about economic development. And instead of looking at it and talking about it as an either/or, as either we have jobs and economic growth or we have good environmental quality, either we have new industrial facilities or we have inclusive community engagement, I think it represents a shift for us as Fresno to not believe that we have to take the crumbs at the bottom of the barrel, but that believe that we can have it all and that we work together to achieve all of that together. So I would also just encourage you, you know, after voting to support this today, to stay with it and see it through. So we really ensure that the outcome is an inclusive outcome that really respects and honors the residents who live in these neighborhoods and all the other key stakeholders. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to come forward and address this item? Please do so. After you give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Estela Ortega y soy del Distrito 7.
Good afternoon to everyone. My name is Estela Ortega, and I'm from District 7.
Ahorita en estos momentos yo me siento muy mal porque ustedes no han considerado que en este tiempo muchos padres quisieran participar para dar sus opiniones.
It's like, right now, I'd like to share that, at this moment, I feel very bad because, you know, there are so many parents that would like to be here and share their own opinion.
Y recomendaciones sobre este plan específico que tienen ustedes. Es que, es el tiempo en que todos los niños salen de la escuela, entonces es no posible para los papás poder venir a esta hora.
And recommendations for the specific plan that you're hearing before you because this is a time when a lot of parents are picking up their kids and it's not possible for them to be here and come and speak before you on the issue before you.
Ahorita yo fui a recoger a mi hijo de la escuela y regresé para poder decir mis opiniones. Por qué? Porque me interesa, es un plan muy importante para toda la comunidad que necesita ser escuchada, necesita también opinar y también dar recomendaciones de qué se necesita para un plan específico.
Right now, I just left to go pick up my son, and I drove back here because this is an important item. Because this is a community that would be impacted and that needs to be heard. They need to be part of the process so you can hear their suggestions and their recommendations.
La comunidad ha sido muy impactada por muchas industrias. Nosotros necesitamos que en este plan se pongan hospitales, más escuelas. Las escuelas están saturadas de muchos alumnos. Pueden considerar eso también. Necesitamos hospitales. Tenemos que ir a hospitales que están muy lejos. Por ejemplo, yo tengo un hijo que tiene asma. Él cuando yo lo tengo que llevar a emergencia, lo tengo que llevar hasta Madera.
The community is heavily impacted by a lot of the industries here. It needs more hospitals, more schools. The schools are saturated with students, and the hospitals are really far away. For instance, my son has asthma, and whenever I have to take him to the emergency room, I have to drive all the way to Madera just to get him treatment.
Necesitamos más parques para que también pueda también mitigar la contaminación. Estamos muy impactados de mucha contaminación, de muchas industrias. Por favor, tomen en cuenta eso, que somos muchos. En las escuelas hay muchos niños, se han enfermado. Es lo que yo les pido a ustedes. Muchas gracias por su atención y este espacio también.
We need more, we also need more parks in our community to help mitigate a lot of the contamination. Our communities are heavily impacted by a lot of the pollution, and the schools are extremely saturated and overpopulated with students who continue to get sick. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to make a comment and for you to listen to me, and I hope you take it into consideration, and I thank you for the space.
Y por último también, pueden considerar si pueden hacer estas reuniones para que la comunidad participe como en la tarde y también para las personas que trabajen porque es importante que ustedes reciban las opiniones de las demás residentes. Hay muchas cosas importantes y nosotros sabemos las necesidades. Muchas gracias.
And lastly, I'd like you to consider to have these hearings in the afternoon so for parents who are picking up their kids or people who work during the day can come and comment because you need to be listening to other residents as well because they're the ones who know their community and they have the solutions, and they need to be part of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bisticard Rosa DePue. Thanks for submitting your card, and once you give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, thank you. My name is Rosa DePue. My address is 521 East Britton, Fresno 93706. I have heard what everyone said, and I say the same thing. I come from a community that usually is afraid to speak out, is... does not believe that we are heard. So I just want to thank you. I understand that now you're going to take more of our input in. And so that's what I just want to say is to please remember that we are also a community. Thank you.
Good job, Rosa. Thank you. Thanks for your patience. Anyone else wish to come forward? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. We'll go to my screen, which indicates Member Soria to be followed by Member Carbossi.
Thank you, Council President. I'll try to keep my remarks short. I will be supporting this item.
Did I turn the timer on?
Yes, please. This item today. Quería decirle a las mamás que hablaron hoy en español les doy las gracias por estar aquí para venir a decirnos sus inquietudes y las necesidades que existen en su comunidad. Pienso que es muy importante. Y estoy de acuerdo que en otras juntas que tengamos sobre este plan que se hagan en la tarde cuando puedan venir las personas que están trabajando o que tienen los niños en escuelas. Yo voy a apoyar que hagamos eso en el futuro. So I just said that I agree with the moms that spoke about making sure that we do time these types of items and make these meetings accessible to the working families and to the moms or dads that are picking up their kids from school during this hour. So I know that there are a number of them that wanted to participate. But I am excited to be able to support this important first step. I knew that, you know, now being on the council for the fifth year, I knew that this date would come where we understand that issues aren't mutually exclusive. You can have environmental justice, and you can have jobs, and you can have good development. But it takes leadership, and it takes everyone, the variety of stakeholders, to be part of the conversation so that rather than continue to have the status quo, we really transform our community where we're seeing equitable investments. I was excited to see, you know, when the conversations began through the DRIVE Initiative, the conversations being much more intentional about how we were investing because we realized that in order for the city of Fresno to thrive, we need poor communities to be invested in and to be thriving so that we all rise together. So I'm excited about this first step. I look forward to the continued conversation, but that it doesn't just become a conversation and people say their piece, but that we listen and that we incorporate what is shared and what people want because I think that folks in every neighborhood want to have access to good schools. They want to have access to good jobs. They want to have access to good, quality housing. And if we're all working hard and doing our part, there's no reason why there shouldn't be a difference just because of our SIP code. So I'm excited about what we are doing today. And I want to thank the community members because I know that the residents have been very resilient and they haven't given up. And I'm so grateful for at least the few moms that have been here, that have continued to be here at least in my time for the last five years, pushing the council and the administration to do what is right. And what is right is to make sure that residents are included in the future planning of our city, in particular, when it comes to heavy industries that could potentially have environmental impacts or further impacts to their neighborhoods. So I'm proud that, again, that we see community and the business sector come together and be at the table, and so I'm proud to support this today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's Member Carbossi's opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to say thank you to all the speakers. I know it's difficult to come here and speak. I mean, you're working, you know, your parents, you've got a lot of responsibility. But last year, when I had to come here and speak, it's kind of intimidating a little bit. But you're so passionate about, and you believe so much in your neighborhoods, you made it look really easy. And it really makes my decision a lot easier. As the council member for Northwest Fresno, I want to say, welcome, Ashley Warner. I know that that wasn't said last time, but I want you to know we're glad to have you here. And I want to thank the mayor's office as well because compromise is not a bad word. A lot of you out there, you're working, you're hustling, you're living life. You don't want to see us fight. You want to make sure that you have sidewalks so your kids can go to school. You want to make sure you have vegetation and trees, you can have cleaner air. You want to have quality of life, and that's understandable. And it's really nice to see how compromise can lead to progress, and that's what we have here today. In my district, part of my district, including Councilmembers Soria and Arias's district, is the West Area, which is the area west of 99 from Clinton all the way to Herndon. They call it Forgotten Fresno. That's an area where they got really organized, and they have the West Area Steering Committee, and staff work really hard to get community input. There were no language barriers. There were translators for Mong and for Punjabi and for Spanish so that people can really be engaged. So we need you to be engaged, but also understand that, and you already know this, but we need the business sector and the residents coming together. We need labor coming together. We need the city government coming together to create a plan that everyone can be happy with. It's not easy, but you have a lot of good people that have been leading this today. And again, thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Tim, and City Manager, and the council members here. And I look forward to supporting this measure.
Thank you very much. The screen is clear. We have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, passes seven zero. Congratulations.
Thank you all for coming.
Next, we'll go to item 1K. 1A, thank you.
Okay, so I pulled this item. I just have a couple questions. I know that... Hold on, let me pull it up. So one of the, or at least the information that I got with the adjustment of the master fee schedule for services because in the previous budget, we had allocated general funds to kind of fill in the gap, right? Because the fees were lower. Now with the adjustments of these fees and additional monies coming in, it'll free up some of the general fund. What, some of the general fund dollars that were originally allocated, what are we planning to do with those general fund dollars?
So this item is a code amendment. The master fee schedule is not...
The master fee schedule is not on an agenda item as of yet.
Okay. So.
Yeah, so Councilmember Soria, we are bringing the master fee schedule item to council, I would imagine in December, early January. But this item is just as.
So it's just a routine?
Right, this is, the code cycle occurs every three years and then we we make our local amendments to the code and so this is before you is our, the first reading of the code amendments that we proposed to to add to the municipal code.
And when, when is the, the master fee schedule coming back to the council?
We don't have a date. We'd like to bring it sometime in December but we haven't settled on what that would be yet.
And so I guess what would I would ask, I know that it's not part of this item right now, but what I would ask when you guys bring it is to, so that we know what are those dollars now that are being freed up going to be utilized? If it's within the fire department, I would like to at least know if it's going to be used for capital improvements or any other deferred maintenance, I think it would be great for us to actually know what the plan.
Certainly, we'll bring back any information that we can, we can provide for you.
Perfect, thank you. So I'll make a motion.
Motion by Member Soria, seconded by Member Chavez. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address this issue? Please come forward. Seeing none, public comment is closed. We have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, passes one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven zero. Thank you. Next is item one K. That's an item that I pulled from the consent calendar, so I'll kick that off. You know, originally I was on the first and original ordinance addressing cannabis in the city of Fresno. It seems like it was eternity ago but I think it was like four years ago. With that, I had committee members, Oliver Baines III, as well as Clinton Olivier, and we were responsible for writing it and we actually got a vote on the original ordinance of six one, which is pretty amazing in light of all the conversation at that time. And our goal was really to make it friendly, to make it operate as a successful business wherever it may be in Fresno, whoever may be operating it in whatever capacity. So we want to make sure you can succeed. So being an entrepreneur and a business startup, it's very difficult and I think everyone kind of has this feeling that it's pot, pot equals panacea, money's rolling and flowing and going and everybody's just, you know, getting their Bentleys and airplanes and all that stuff. That's not reality, folks. That's not reality and I've been up and down the state and my colleagues on the committee before this committee went to Denver, Colorado Springs, Las Vegas, all the places that you could get the maximum information on an ordinance that would create success. So with that, we created something that came, came up with a six one vote and we're very, very pleased with that. Since then, there's been an evolution. I've talked about it before but I have to talk about it again. But I want to start off by saying the SEQA aspect of this ordinance has not been adopted. We haven't had a chance to, haven't been provided with it nor have we had the opportunity to review it and see how it fits in with our ordinance or how our ordinance would fit in with SEQA. They're not always in sync, if you will, and it's quite a burden to be honest with you. The other element that's perpetually moving is the state. State of California adds, subtracts, amends, refines, time after time. So there's currently bills pending in Sacramento. What are those bills? We have some rough ideas but as you've seen from our council, what you see on the agenda doesn't always come to fruition. There are amendments, deletions, additions. So I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse today because we don't have those two key ingredients, what is the reality of the state of California at this moment or the SEQA. So for me, this ordinance in its current shape, form, is setting up these businesses, potential successful businesses, to fail. It's my opinion that the basis for this failure is that we're not keeping in mind what it takes to run a business. I'm a businessman. I've been self-employed for over 40 years. I've been involved with several other businesses and they've been successful, quite successful. I know Member Karbasi is a successful businessman. So with our opinions on business, I think merits some consideration. So with that, my experience tells me that it's very difficult to have a business. Why? Because there's rules, regulations, statutes, licenses, ordinances, all sorts of complications. And I was getting to that, Mr. Brettafield, your favorite topic, is that we, as a businessman, I have to post my business license, I've got to do quarterlies, I've got to schedule employees, I've got to coordinate all sorts of things just to make a business open and meet my payroll. So it's really tough. There are HR issues, I could go on and on and on. So that's the basis for me and my opinion on this issue. So rather than create more obstacles, I think we should have less obstacles. Less obstacles equals success. So for me and the current proposed ordinance, I've mentioned this before, page 44, there's a paragraph that was in the original ordinance that indicates the key phrase is, "The contents of the social equity elements are at the discretion of the applicant." You, I assume some of you are going to get into this process, it's up to you to figure that out. What really fits you, your lifestyle, your background, what do you think would really help and benefit this community? "The weight of the social equity portion of the application will be considered in the overall scoring of the application." Again, it keeps it wide open. What works? What works for you? What would work for you and complement this city? So with that in mind, that's been deleted, by the way, that's deleted. And I said before, it might be something like a mobile health unit that you could roll into the city of Fresno, different areas, and that could be a social equity program. It could be an organization or group going to schools and telling middle school kids, here's the perils of opiates and other drugs, whatever. There's a lot of things that could be done to benefit our program. However, however, in the current ordinance, that freedom has been restricted. I'm looking at page 45 and it indicates social equity applicant under three, can't read it, three I, I believe, three one, sorry. So now there are listed on several pages, these are things that you shall consider, shall incorporate, shall be part of your business. I'm sure most of you have read it. I don't want to go through them one by one but it, let me put it this way. If I had these restrictions and obstacles on my business or the businesses I've been associated with or have been in the past, they would be a failure. They would be a failure. It's tough enough just opening the doors, let alone making sure you, one out of every commercial cannabis businesses has to be in a certain, your business has to be in a certain area, you've got to have someone with a past conviction for cannabis crime or an immediate family member, et cetera, et cetera. Those are all things that in a utopia might be good, but we're talking reality. How are you going to succeed in your business? It's competitive. It's competitive. Every business is. So to, for me, to support this, we need to reintroduce the paragraph I just mentioned on letting you as applicants figure out what's best for your business opportunity and for the city of Fresno. And then again, on page 45 in particular, shall, shall, must, must be removed and we can say may, may, or have that opportunity. So with these types of mandates, I can't in clear conscience support that knowing that I'm going to set you up to fail or make your opportunities more restricted or make it more difficult to be successful. Your success reflects on the city of Fresno and potentially my district. Extremely important to me. So those are just my opinions. You have the basis for it. I have stood by that all along. So with that in mind, we can go to my colleagues and Member Chavez, you're the first one up. Unless we want to go to public comment. Yeah, let's do that. All right. So we'll come out, go out to the public real quick and I do have two cards. I don't know if you're still here. Zach, if you're here, come on up. Thanks for your patience in coming back this afternoon. David, you will be next. Anybody else, you'll have an opportunity after these two gentlemen speak. Afternoon and name and address.
Good afternoon. Zach Dravon, 2904 Pacific Avenue, Stockton, California. President Capriolio and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Zach Dravon, serving as General Counsel for Medallion Wellness, prospective applicant in the city's forthcoming cannabis license application process. First, we'd like to express our appreciation for the time and resources invested by city staff as well as yourselves into the development of the ordinance before you today as it's clear that a great deal of thoughtful consideration was placed into creating, creating an opportunity for professional capable and proven operators to participate in the city's newly forming legal cannabis market, should you move forward with approval. Over the last three years, Medallion has been a driving force in cannabis policy reform across the valley with an established track record of responsible and successful operation at Stanislaus County and Atwater locations, with new locations coming in Modesto, Merced, and Waterford in 2020. Part of our commitment to advocacy has included hosting municipal representatives on facility tours and maintaining an open discourse with staff in the development of local regulatory standards. This continued collaboration between operators and regulators is critical to the success of the industry and the resulting benefits for the communities in which cannabis businesses operate. We hope to continue to serve as a resource in offering regulators firsthand insight on issues affecting the industry in order to protect the integrity of local cannabis programs and of our regional market. Medallion Wellness was the first to be approved in both Stanislaus County and Atwater for retail operations and received letters of support from neighboring businesses who've benefited from our presence, not only as an anchor business, but as an established deterrent of criminal activity based on our security personnel and 24-hour live-monitored video surveillance systems. We've had zero security issues at either of our locations and we've been very well-received by neighboring businesses because of the responsible and professional manner with which our businesses run. Medallion has also been active in supporting charitable organizations, working to improve the quality of life for residents and communities such as the JFK School for the Disabled and Molesto, the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and the American GI Forum. In our business operations, we strive to provide safe access to quality, lab-tested products along with information for customers about responsible methods of storage and consumption as well as the effects of the products themselves. All of our inventory is tracked through shipping manifests and sales invoices which are inputted through the state's track and trace system metric. We conduct reconciliations of our physical inventory against inventory records weekly and have not had a single product unit go missing thus far. We work to promote public safety, not only through the security personnel and infrastructure in place at our facilities, but also through supporting the efforts of local law enforcement and the elimination of the black market. Moreover, we are confident in our ability to bring a substantial economic benefit to the city of Fresno through employment of its residents and generation of revenue through a local sales tax and cannabis tax. We consider it a unique opportunity and privilege to bring our dedication to excellence in this industry to the city of Fresno. With that, I'd ask that you please move to approve the ordinance before you today. I thank you for your time and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
The items I recited under the social equity applicant portion, have you, your area is at Stockton, did you say?
My office is in Stockton. We operate out of the city of Modesto within the jurisdiction of Stanislaus County as well as the city of Atwater.
With those two jurisdictions, do you have the same proposed requirements of the hiring policy and location, et cetera?
There have not been strict equity requirements. However, in each of those jurisdictions, it's been part of a competitive process and there are community benefit criteria that each of those municipalities was looking for in our applications.
Well, I heard your community benefits. They are right on, they're perfect. I like that. But I just wanted to know, I knew you didn't have these restrictions but I had to ask you for the record, so thank you for your answer. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No?
Thank you.
And then next is David.
Yes.
All right, I'm good. Thanks for being patient today and if you give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is David Abasi with the Central Valley Citizens for Responsible Government. Our address is 727 Kentucky Street in Bakersfield, California. I'm here today to oppose the city council's vote to control the cannabis permit selection process. As we've seen in Kern County and Sacramento, for example, elected officials have taken money from cannabis groups that end up getting these limited permits. It's a common problem nationwide. Surprisingly, it is pretty much throughout, from here to Maine. In Kern County, our supervisors wanted to give conditional use permits to those who paid to play. One supervisor was already indicted and another supervisor is expected to be indicted. They took money from these special interest groups, these cannabis special interest groups, and promised them permits in return, creating a monopoly. In Sacramento, a Ukrainian, a Ukrainian cannabis dispensary owner somehow managed to get eight permits when the city's rules only allowed for one permit per group. He gave money to politicians who gave him these permits in return and the FBI is investigating. The same thing is happening here in Fresno. Elected officials are apparently promising permits to those who have contributed but in the end are going to give all these permits to a group like Weed Maps, a cannabis special interest group, and make some excuse for why these others didn't get the permits. We've seen it firsthand and we have some evidence that indicates that some of these council members, some council members have suggested positive outcomes to those who have made contributions to their campaigns. To dispel the appearance of favoritism and to ensure the integrity of the selection process, the permits should be issued through the city manager and not an elected official. It should also be an open lottery, not a score system, as that can also be compromised or corrupted, to ensure a fair and equitable selection process. There is also the matter of SEQA. In Kern County, they also had said they were exempt from the environmental review but they didn't consider the negative environmental impacts such as closing down X amount of dispensaries and reducing it and the impacts that has on the traffic and air pollution here in the valley. It also didn't take into consideration things like indoor cultivation. By reducing these numbers, more people will be having cultivating their own, which also could have a negative impact on wastewater runoff and electrical consumption here. So there are things that the county had to reconsider after a lawsuit for SEQA was challenged and they had to redo that. So that's something to take into consideration as well, but the main focus for you folks today is to make sure that, to maintain the integrity and the trust in the selection of these permits, it should be a lottery through the city manager. I have copies of my statements and some supporting documents. I have seven copies for each council member. I'd like to give those to you. And those have some supporting information and thank you very much. Please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else in the public wish to come forward?
Council President, I'd like to correct the record. The, it's clear to me that the recent speaker hasn't read the updated ordinance. The updated revised ordinance has the city manager awarding the business permits and they can be appealed by the city council. So that issue has been addressed.
Sir, I apologize to you for the interruption. This is public comment time, so if you give us your name and address, you have three minutes.
Okay, JaPaul White, 6434 West Renwood Lane. Just coming back to push back on the social equity issue, you know, there's guidelines at the state level and if Fresno adopts a social equity program, there's over a million dollars that we can draw down that can then be put into an incubation fund to help incubate local businesses, to help them be more successful. And one of the main reasons why social equity is necessary and it needs to be implemented through the council's authority, businesses won't adopt those if it's going to add to their, add expense and cost. And so that's why it's incumbent upon the city council to see the need for social equity, particularly in a city like Fresno where we had an overwhelmingly arrest record with cannabis infractions for African Americans. Last time we were here, we went over that study from the ACLU and Drug Policy Alliance. And so for us, social equity from the council's standpoint gives authority that these businesses then have to adopt these practices and procedures and doesn't just give lip service because we're looking at here in Fresno where this is the 10th worst city in the United States of America for African Americans. We're looking at black infant health that is skyrocketing at third world country levels and so for African Americans in this city, we're looking at the potential of social equity entrepreneurship being an economic force for our community. So I would plead with the council to reconsider the social equity program as it stands and to look at the state model that they have and how we can draw funds down from the state to supplement what we need to do here in Fresno. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on this? Please come forward. Give us your name and address and then you'll have three minutes. We'll close public comment. And Member Chavez, you're first up on the screen.
Thank you, President. I want to thank, this has been probably a two-year affair, two-year-long process. I, forty years, sorry, sorry about that. I, I've seen this conversation evolve in our city from a time where there was a zero tolerance, no, you know, not welcome sign to us having this conversation. no, you know, not welcome sign, to us having this conversation over and over. But I think it was time, and I have the sneaking suspicion sometimes that I'm going to be the fourth vote on this conversation, and that's okay. For the record, my conscience is clear, and that's because I've done a lot of research on this, and I appreciate the sponsors of this ordinance. I know it took a lot of work, whether you're going to support the final version or not. I also want to thank them for making those two modifications that I requested last time, where the city manager will now make the selection of the company, but the council can also appeal that decision, because who best knows the pulse of what's going on in our districts than ourselves. I think that's a good balance, a good collective ownership of what we're going to do. And then I also just want to touch on the equity component of this, where I think we have an opportunity to not just do the bare minimum, and I've been tracking some state legislation that is working its way through Sacramento. I think it'll help us if we align with that and not just do the bare minimum, but mirror what the state's coming up with as well in the very near future. That'll help us pull some of those grant dollars the gentleman mentioned earlier. But I also want to thank the number of residents that called, and very quietly. And I know oftentimes the media portrays folks that use either THC or CBD as criminals, but these are hard-working folks that live in our community that oftentimes need this for their medical conditions, particularly a gentleman in my district that has a daughter that suffers from epilepsy, and he wanted to have a safe place, a location where he could go and purchase this medicine for his child. And so I think what we're going to end up with today is a good balance. It was a lot of work related to this ordinance, but I think this is going to be the start of that conversation, and then we'll be able to provide those safe environments for our folks. There will be a number of conversations as to what those look like in our community. I'm sure there'll be a lot of dialogue back and forth, but I honestly want to thank the sponsors, all of them, whether you support this or not today, on making this possible. And with that, I will be supporting this today. Thank you.
Next up, Member Arias.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to give a quick update for the public. We do have some additional revisions, that's why it's here for a reintroduction. We heard and took all the feedback that we had from our first initial public hearing on this matter a couple weeks ago, and worked on incorporating as much from the business input that we received and from our council colleagues. The changes are in four or five key areas: advertisement and signage. There will be no exterior advertisement in any of the retail businesses, and no exterior signage in the commercial businesses. That addresses some of the safety concerns individuals had in the business community. The video cameras will be required to be the same consistent quality and the length that we have for other businesses, to make sure that our police department has access to high-quality video in case it's ever needed. We also addressed the labor piece agreements that was originally at 20 employees to 10 employees, to address member, as far as those concerns. And then, of course, for Councilmember Chavez, we did make a modification that the city manager will approve the business licenses, and the city council retains the ability to appeal those awards if they feel necessary. That is consistent with every other line-use policy that we have now. We have the authority to appeal billboards or CUPs on any other business that the planning commissioner or city manager approves. And then lastly, the social equity language was improved to align with the state social equity guidelines, to ensure that we have an ability to draw down some of the state resources that have already been allocated to our neighboring cities that are ahead of the game. And then lastly, on the social equity employment priorities, we wanted to make sure that we included veterans, those who are unemployed, underemployed, and those receiving public assistance, and former foster care folks, to make sure that this industry, you know, leads the effort on employing as many people that other industries have left behind, because the more folks we have with a good-paying job that offers a pension, a healthcare, and good wages is better for the city of Fresno. And I want to thank everyone for the time that they've taken. I know the majority of this body has visited operations up and down the state. We've seen that there are folks who are very capable of operating these businesses. As a matter of fact, I ran into more corporate lawyers and chemists in this industry than anybody else. There's some big misnomers of the operators of these industries, but we want to make sure that we are learning the lessons that other cities have tripped over, to make sure that Fresno, as we start with a very low tax rate comparable to other jurisdictions, makes it a business-friendly environment while still safeguarding the neighborhoods in which these locations will be located. So just as a reminder, we did change the notification process, so now neighborhoods will be notified at the point of application. So applicants would have to mitigate some of the concerns that are brought to the forefront of the city manager's attention. With that, thank you.
Next is Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues for the debate that we've had over the last couple years, and I appreciate us being able to bring something forward that maybe not everyone, but hopefully at least the majority of the council will be able to approve this. I believe it's going to set some good precedent in terms of the social equity component, where even though we voted on an original ordinance some time ago, we did say that we would come back and revise that ordinance to make sure that it does truly impact the communities that have been impacted by the war on drugs. And so I'm just proud that we are able to put something forward and looking forward to seeing how our city can also compete for those state dollars, because as you all know, we definitely need those state dollars to come down to our community. Thank you.
Next is Member Carbasi. That'll be followed by Member Brettafield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you for your comments representing business. Obviously, you have some skin in the game. You know how overregulation by a legislative body, usually with people without business experience, can really hurt businesses and their employees. I also want to recognize, Mr. President, that of the three members of the current committee, you've been here the longest, and you were involved in the last process. That carries a lot of weight with me.
It's a lot of work. Thank you.
This is a new area for the city. A lot of my residents, I'll give you an example, one of the things they're concerned about are people that will, for example, drive while high, and the impact it's going to have, and if our public safety is ready for that impact. We need these businesses to succeed, because if something bad happens, then we'll have outrage, and we'll be back to square one. So we want to make sure that what we do put forward is something that's realistic and will actually work. You know, I love the idea that we want to encourage businesses to hire veterans, hire people that are underemployed or are currently on public assistance, or hire former foster youth and give them more opportunity. That's a good thing. But it's one thing to incentivize, it's another thing to require. And I know we want those dollars, that's a really good point, but one provision is you have to hire someone with a previous conviction. That may have been a felony cannabis conviction. My concern with that is, you're dealing in a cash business, you're dealing in a business with money, and we want these businesses to succeed. So we're telling a business owner, one of the seven, if you want to get that license, that you're going to have to have someone with that conviction. That's, I think, a big overstep by a legislative body. And one problem, let me give you an example. Let's say some of the council members really love Tom Brady. I don't. Let's say they do. And they say, you know, "We love Tom Brady so much, we don't care that he used under-inflated footballs. We're going to give him an advantage, we like him. Every other quarterback in the NFL has to follow the rules and work harder." But you get a pass. And that's the problem I have. In order to have equity, you have to have fairness. It's in the very definition of equity, is fairness and treating people the same. That provision isn't fair, and that's why I can't support this measure.
Can I just correct the record for a second? Because you're making a misrepresentation where you're saying that it's an actual requirement. It is not an actual requirement. The policy...
Oh, excuse me, what's the requirement? The actual requirement?
The policy that you're referring to, you're making it seem like it's a requirement to hire someone with a previous conviction. That is not the requirement. The requirement is that the industry focus on hiring local, and amongst those local, we list a series of individuals that we would like them to choose. It doesn't say you must get this type of person. It's giving them an opportunity, and we're saying, hey, which are the groups that have been disproportionately disadvantaged, some of them being those that have been impacted by the war on drugs? Yes, that is one, but it's not a strict requirement. It is a list of folks that the industry can pick and choose to hire. They don't have to hire anyone with a previous conviction, they can hire all veterans. They don't have to hire a person with a previous conviction, they can hire all of the folks that used to be part of the foster care system. So don't misrepresent what we're trying to do. The goal of this policy is to make sure that folks from our local community that have been underrepresented, underemployed, unemployed, have been victims of the war on drugs, are given an opportunity to work in this industry, because we know from companies that have been operating now for the last few years throughout the state, these are pretty good-paying jobs, good wages and good benefits. We want to ensure that people have an equitable opportunity to thrive. If these people have that opportunity, our community is far off better.
So just to clarify, I want to reiterate, I'm going to ask you a question, Council President. You know, I did mention that it's a great thing to encourage them to hire veterans or to hire people that were former foster youth, and I'm sorry if you feel it's misrepresenting the facts, but is it a fact in this bill that of the choices, one of them are people with previous convictions? That is a choice that we're going to have to vote on, even having that language in there?
Actually, I think I read it, but I'll do it again. It says, "A minimum of one out of every seven commercial cannabis business permits for the retail business shall, shall be awarded to an equity applicant. A maximum of two out of the seven shall be in various areas." Next, it says, "A minimum of one out of every eight commercial cannabis businesses shall, shall get to the level of at least the past conviction, felony or misdemeanor, immediate family member, low-income housing." This is the one that really got to me. "It shall have no less than 51% ownership by individuals who meet criteria as one and two." What's one and two? Oh, conviction, felony or misdemeanor of cannabis crime, or below-income housing. ZIP code, ZIP code. So your statements and my statements are our opinion based upon the exact language in here. So we may differ, that's part of the debate process, but read it, folks. It's pretty concise. Does that answer your question, Member Carbasi? All right, thank you. Next is Member Brettafield.
Yes, this gentleman that came up and expressed concern about untoward undue influence from where these dispensaries will go with council members, it is a fact that the city manager is going to determine the permit, but that can be appealed by the city council. Is that correct? City managers? I just want to get it on the record.
It can be appealed to the council by the council member of that district.
Right. So, I mean, yes, that's a step removed from the city council, but the city council can still appeal it and change the decision by the city manager. So it certainly raises that possibility of things that have happened in other cities also happening here. Same with the planning commission, there's a CUP, conditional use permit, that can be appealed by the city council member, and that can certainly be a result of undue influence by that city council member. So to act like there isn't that possibility is false. It certainly is a possibility. The social equity issue for me is a problem. I said that last time. I don't support giving people businesses because they've been convicted of crimes. And it was alluded to, they were a victim of the war on drugs. I don't think they're a victim of the war on drugs. If you're committing crimes that have laws, you're not a victim, you're a criminal, not a victim. So I differ with how we define criminality, as well as what a true victim is. So I would not support it on that. So if I hear correctly, Councilmember Carbasi has said he's not going to support this. Council President Capriolo is not going to support this. I am not going to support this, so I imagine this is going to pass on a 4-3. Now, I want to say something, I want to say something very clear. The mayor has clearly said he would support only medicinal marijuana, not recreational marijuana. That is on the record, it's on video, it's indisputable, and so this is going to pass 4-3, and it's about recreational marijuana. So it's my expectation that the mayor is going to veto this action. Now, city attorney, is it possible for the mayor to veto this action?
Yes.
Okay. So the mayor has clearly said he was going to never support recreational dispensaries. This is all about recreational dispensaries, and it is my expectation, and I'm calling on the mayor to follow through on his pledge, to veto this action, so we don't bring dispensaries, recreational dispensaries into the city, which I think is a complete wrong direction to be going. So we will see if he's true to his word. I know him to be an honorable man, and I expect him to follow through on his commitment not to welcome recreational dispensaries in this city.
Thank you. Next is Member Chavez, then Member Arias.
Thank you, President. You know, I appreciate the conversation going on, but here's what I'll say. I think anybody that knows me knows that I'm a big believer and supporter of law and order, but I'm also a big believer and supporter of redemption. And the conversation going on, these are folks that, yes, committed a crime, but paid their debt to society and are trying to earn a living. And I think when we put that hat on, and I've had a number of conversations with folks that are my colleagues, and sometimes we invoke our faith, that's a basic foundation of our faith, where we understand that folks make a mistake, but we shouldn't treat somebody that's paid their debt to society as a criminal in perpetuity. We should give them an opportunity to do, to give some redemption, and I think that's what we're attempting to do here. That's the equity piece that I think people are talking about. I don't think anybody's advocating for somebody that's currently incarcerated or committed some kind of heinous crime to be given preference. What we're trying to do is, for those folks, again, that went through the system, that paid their debt to society, let's give them an opportunity for redemption. Thank you.
Member Arias.
Thank you, colleagues. I'd just like to remind the council that the previous council on a 6-1 voted for the original ordinance that called for recreational to be legalized after the first year of adoption. By next month will be the first year. So recreational and adult use, which is legal in the state of California, and it's legal in the city of Fresno, because the voters approved it with more than 70% approval in the ballot box, is something that we're tasked with regulating. We don't get to choose what laws we enforce and which ones we regulate. The state voters, the city of Fresno voters, the previous council, all approved adult recreational to take place a year after initiation, initial adoption. Thank you.
Okay, Member Carbasi.
Just for clarification, Mr. President, that version, though, that passed 6-1, and you are right, I agree with your point, you are right about that, that people have spoken, but that version was very different than this version, correct? Okay.
Member Brettafield.
Yeah, it is different, and also it wasn't a 70%, it was 51 to 49% in the city of Fresno. My district overwhelmingly opposed it, as did District 2, but it passed 51 to 49%, not by 70% of the vote. And again, I call on the mayor to do what he said he was going to do, which was never support recreational dispensaries. He clearly said it, he's on record saying it. This passes 4-3, and if the mayor vetoes this, then this will put to rest what other cities and other cities in Fresno County have done, which is said they don't want the dispensaries in their communities. Fresno County has said the same thing. I think we ought to be wise and not do that either.
Okay. So the gentleman that brought up the social equity aspect, thank you, I wanted to clarify that. I think you understood that I support the social equity program from the state of California, and it's mandated. We really don't have an option there. But I've read the regulations, and there are, none of these are in the state social equity program. As far as the convicted criminals, they don't say the social equity program requires low-income household and either past conviction of criminal cannabis crimes, et cetera, as I read it. So that's, I just want you to know, the social equity I'm in favor of, but we need that grant money. I've read it, though, trust me. So anyway... I've read it, though. Trust me. So anyway, what I'm saying is, these, hold on, hold on. So what I'm saying is, we need the grant dollars. We need to comply with the state rules. State rules are fine. I have no problems with that. But when we get to this type of specificity, I have a problem with it. And let me give you an example. I call it, and I think others, the gentleman in the back could recall this from other jurisdictions, it's called a straw person. So what you do is, you have someone with a cannabis conviction or an immediate family member, et cetera. So you qualify. And then what does that person do? I've been told and advised by other people in the business, et cetera, they put the person in the corner, pay them $75,000, bingo, they complied with this type of social equity. So that's a business call. Each person has to make that call, assuming these things are passed. But I do support social equity. I do support those grant dollars. We need all those that we can get. I think it's a great idea and incentive for us. As far as paying their debt, it's true. When you go to jail, that's your punishment, and when you come out, you paid your debt. So at that time, I support the opportunity to fill out an application for employment at a cannabis business. No problem. But mandating, I have a real difficult problem with that. So with that, we have a motion in a second, I believe. And we-
I think we've all been very blunt today.
Okay. So let's do an equity, let's, equity vote. So yes, to support the current ordinance as opposed to the past one, and a no is, motion, I assume, by Member Arias, second by Member Soria, third by Member Chavez.
And for the record, District 6 approved Measure A by 70%.
All right, let's vote. Yes or no, please? Oh, I'm sorry.
Come on, somebody, tell them.
No, no.
You all were-
Sorry. I'm trying to, I'm trying to-
I missed it.
All right, here we go.
You are not very blunt.
Are we doing it again?
Yeah, we have to do it again. Are you kidding? So it passes 4-3 with Members Carbasi, Capriolo, and Brettafield voting no. That will conclude, oh, we got unscheduled communication before we leave. And so Nicholas Windstar, are you still here? If so, please come down and address the council. If not, we'll go to Mr. Love. Please come up. You have unscheduled communication opportunity, Mr. Love. Mr. Love, it's your opportunity to speak. You'll give us your name and address. You have three minutes.
My name's David Love. I live at, David Love, Building 429. Today's date, Friday, November 25, 2019. 5705 East 110, Apartment 205. The only white door from the Mon population of True Saint. The 100, the 100 door, the heart in the mountain. Voicing all the way to Washington, DC, to Sacramento, to the United States of America. Voicing Jesus' heaven's will. Voicing our politician, Paula Yang, Donald Satan, G. Wire, David Tao, the organization of Moon Shong Six Numbers of Satan, of Kukong, her 15 house of Satan in the city district number five. The baby Satan, Ching Jong Moon Shong, at age 40 to 45.
Mr. Love, I have to have four people here, so I'm watching to see if anybody leaves.
Don't distract, okay.
Thank you.
Also voicing out Alex Yang. Oh, they're blocking right there. They like to block at David Love, Building 429. And voicing out Andrew Yang. They like to block a lot. Andrew Yang's going for a campaign 2020. No difference from politician Paula Yang, Donald Satan, her six number of Satan, Building 429. Jesus' heaven, ways up in heaven. And Jesus' heaven victories, Paul Cabio. Race 12, race four, the 12 heavens, the four fours. There's also the Mayor Lee Brand. His mayoral seat is up for 2020. Jerry Dyer is running for mayor, way up in Jesus' heaven. Jesus' heaven didn't choose Jerry Brown. Oh, they're blocking a lot, but I'm not tempted. Jesus' heaven does not choose Jerry Dyer. Jesus' heaven choose Mayor Lee Brand. Any other opponent that Jesus' heaven favor over Jerry Dyer. Jerry Dyer is not favored in Jesus' heaven. The people will not vote Jerry Dyer. No. I know they like to play a two-fold. Also voicing out Terry the Dragon, Satan, her snake ladies of Satan, Satan Ministry during the evening hours. 91.1 dot, I call them. That's how dumb they are at Satan Ministry. Machine are the slowest. Geniuses are the slowest. Where the heart's at, that's where Jesus' Christ remains are at. You guys might be laughing, but look, archaeologists.
We have to wrap it up.
And it's to the highest of trust.
Can you give us your conclusion, and then we, you're out of time, sir.
Yes, I like to block a lot. But I'm not tempted. You guys look at Jerry, Osbot, no, that's you right there. Jerry Perry, Osbot. You guys will know that Saint, Mount Saint Night is to the highest of the trust.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. We will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all very much.